Hopefully so.
I hope they'll extend it by at least three, but better than six because one of the items, one of the icy items is the...
Earthquake and ice.
The cost, yeah.
Right.
The next hasn't even started yet.
No, yeah.
So it's your line.
Yeah.
And they won't finish before the end of February.
Really?
Yeah. So, yeah.
It's real good.
Oop, where you... You went through. There you go.
How are you? Pardon me? Oh, good. How did you do? Okay?
Um, right. I brought in some sort of interest. I'm really interested in excluding, like, big children and parents.
I think the community was interesting because, you know, you can't avoid, it still comes up being personal decisions.
Uh, the other thing, if anybody's, um, just, um, set up, the others.
Oh, good.
Um, I'm... Well, it's kind of, um...
Sorry about that.
Well, I'll come back.
Good, good. Okay. We don't have one with a form, we never do.
No, no form. Just you, Helen. You hear us out, can't you?
Well, I just want to make up decisions anyway.
Yeah. Get their proxies.
Not only.
I didn't want to.
Ooh, look at that.
Where are they going?
I think we got this number. Number four, yeah. Get that quick.
Thank you.
Yep.
These buses were laid out between Burlington and...
Is it real?
It is. I said, I've got a feeling on cruise control, seven, three, that seemed to do it. And they went to some strange places. They didn't know what they were doing. One was down there, you get to these, both of them, you know, there's like a fence, yeah? It was backed up in the north and they had a fence hanging some tree up. I didn't catch the, the tractor trailer. And this brake lights coming on. Now, it's like, ooh, it's only one reason.
Yeah. Pretty calm, I'm trying to buy a, for children. But then they never came, so.
I don't know what it was. It was probably a...
Oh, Patrick Blue. We had, uh, Dr. Lou's school board. It opens for command. I think our group just got here recently.
Oh, yeah.
Just wants to wait, if they have time, if they have time, so. I'm getting a baby here. Same here. Somewhere.
Not as much as everybody else, and I have about four or five charges.
Now, Susan, um, seventy.
Oh, this is the contemporary bridge. That's the last one. Yeah, closed. If you can appreciate it, it's official.
No, Susan's the first. No, Susan's the first.
My friend who was supposed to be closing on her house on Thursday, I think, or two...
Somebody's been...
Yeah, he'd be in Irish, definitely.
Yeah.
And insurance company says they will call the...
Called Sir Pro. I know. It was only one, it was probably days or something like that. I'm so close, but now I need declarations. Go away right away.
And the first order of business is to pledge our allegiance to the flag. Tim, you want to start?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, second item on the agenda is instructions on exiting the building in case of an emergency.
In case we have an emergency tonight, please leave by one of these two doors to go outside into the parking lot and then go beyond the building to the south into the parking lot beyond it. If for some reason these doors are blocked, please go back out into the lobby, back out the main entrance, and gather again at the parking lot both beyond the next building. Tom Hubbard and I will make sure that the building is cleared, so please move expeditiously.
Okay, thank you. Item three, agenda review, any additions, deletions, or changes in the order of agenda items? Yes?
Under, we don't have other business, so I'd like us to add other business. There was a request.
That's seventeen A, or B.
Yes, seventeen B.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to have us discuss a request made by David Marvin. He's a former resident and perhaps a future resident, a returning resident. His father Hugh, in the nineteen seventies, served on the planning commission here in South Burlington, the school board, as well as the city council, which he chaired. And both of his parents passed away over the past, you know, ten or more years, and he would like to plant trees in their honor, close to a public building or a public park. And so I'd like us to see if that needs to be a formal agenda item, or if we can simply say yes, and give them the green light to do that.
Yeah, I would like to piggyback on that, and we certainly can't do that tonight, but to maybe consider some kind of formal program for the, for the community.
Chris Shaw has talked about.
He's talked about, yes, with benches and things, and maybe it would be good to have a process for that. I know UVM has trees in memoriam, and there, there's a big map and, you know, you can go check it out, so. Okay, thank you. I also, on the consent agenda, we need to, to eliminate item C and take it up on the eighteenth. Tom Di Pietro has been really tied up with the picture at our plate, places, and hasn't been able to focus on this, so we'll take it up in the meeting November eighteenth. Any other changes? Okay. Oh, yes.
Yeah, I'd also like to take off, on the warrant, there's a transfer of funds for two million.
Uh-huh.
And I'd like to put that down under update on school, city collaboration. I'll explain that.
Oh, okay.
During that time.
So we would not approve that until later in the agenda, potentially? Okay. All right. You're welcome. Is that it? All right. Item fi, oh, I'm sorry, item four, comments and questions from the public on items not on the agenda. Yes? Want to come up and, please? If you're a crew, you can bring the whole crew.
Totally in agreement.
Okay, good. Mr. Duffey.
I'm Kevin Donahue from Pinnacle Drive, and.
I'm Suseth Vijitanga, Fourteenth Pinnacle Drive.
And we're here tonight due to, I think, about six homes, it was, in the front of Pinnacle being flooded after this last storm. And as you know, I was here, I think, early or later spring, and we were talking about the stormwater utility where we thought, at least I was under the impression, that they were to have taken over the ponds of the neighborhood if they had been brought up to the two thousand and two standard. And our ponds were by the utility, they were requiring it to be brought to a two thousand and seventeen standard, which it was. So it kind of keeps short here. The first thing I have to say is I owe the board an apology of that, when I thought it was the two thousand and two standard, if you remember when I appeared here. I went through it with city clerk Donna Kinville, and she thought a vote had been taken to, to do that, and we searched and searched, and we did not find the vote, other than the city council approving the utility, and in that it would be the two thousand and two standard. And then it was modified. So that brings us up to where the ponds were finished in the summer here of two thousand and nineteen for Pinnacle. And the specific pond that we're talking about tonight is the one that sits just as you come into Pinnacle off of Spear. If you were to take a left, there's a retention pond there near Twenty-Eighth Pinnacle Drive. And I think if people.
And Pinnacle, I always get confused. Pinnacle is on the east side or the west side?
It's on the east side.
East side, okay.
Yeah. And so the, I think the people behind me will agree that none of them have had one drop of water in their homes, in the basements specifically, from, you know, water failing the system of, that was built in, I believe, ninety-five. Operated beautifully. Maybe some, the water going somewhere else may have affected something, is why they wanted them updated, but for as far as Pinnacle Drive went, we were dry as a bone. The stormwater ponds did their job, and we went about our lives very nicely. So bring us to two thousand and nineteen, the summer, three months after these latest and greatest standard, six homes got flooded with the first heavy rain.
And then, and also, all the homes are sit fairly above the level of the ponds. So it's, it's basically, we spend, we spend, I think, almost five hundred thousand dollars, you know, between the grants and then the association and the city, so to complete the ponds. But now, you know, there is clearly, the flooding started from the Fourteenth Pinnacle going to the ponds. So that, it's clearly there's some, some sort of a backup or drainage issue, you know, for those houses, because otherwise from Fifteenth Pinnacle, the Twelve Pinnacles only about ten feet from the, from the Fourteenth Pinnacle, so that there's no, no water damage there. So when I, you know, I spoke into the city, and they said, well, it's a hundred-year, you know, storm that we had, that's a problem, but we have had, you know, half inches rain, you know, since I've been there twelve years, a couple of times.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I don't want to go into that. In fact, my, I think my son checked on the heavy, one of the heaviest rains, and I remember going back, the house that actually sits right next to the ponds was owned by Navi Karami, who no longer lives there, they've moved. But I remember him, I was on the board at the time, and calling me up, and he was severely worried that he was sitting next to the ponds, and in this storm, I believe we had two and a quarter inches, it was, in an hour. And I don't know what the total inches were, but no one had any issues. They, as I said, the ponds did their job. I think what we're here tonight to say to this city is that, you know, we, we have people who are going to be probably out of pocket in this regard, but, you know, well over and above what the limits of the insurance is going to cover. And I think we're here to kind of put the city, you know, in a, in a mode of, what can we do about that?
Yeah, so, excuse me, Kevin. So we had some, some insurance companies, we all, we all have, you know, discussed with our insurance company, so some of the adjusters have come to the houses, and they had verified, and, you know, I think the price they had given us between fifteen thousand to thirty to forty thousand dollars. The most of the houses, basements, are completely finished, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of stops in some of the houses that I've been to. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm on the board at the Pinnacle Association, so I was heavily involved in the retention pond, reconstruction, all that stuff, so I kind of know exactly what's going on, but I think there's a, there's a design for, in this particular issue.
These are the two ponds along.
Not Nolan.
Not Nolan. These are different, these are.
I got Google Maps up here. What, which pond? Is it the one in the north end of Pinnacle?
Yes.
So right on the corner?
Yeah, well, it sort of sits on the corner. So what used to be Olivia Drive, when, when Pinnacle was first built and came off of Spear Street to differentiate, I guess, when someone had a GPS, they'd turn on to Olivia and then turn on to Pinnacle, and for some crazy reason, they made Pinnacle Drive start at Spear Street, which gets confusing to people to turn on.
Right, it's like a circle, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so fourteen.
Fourteen sits sort of by itself.
It's down the street a ways, though, right?
Yeah. Basically, the, the houses got affected was Fourteenth Pinnacle, Fifteenth Pinnacle, Sixteenth Pinnacle, Eighteenth Pinnacle, Twenty Pinnacle, Twenty-two, Twenty-four, and Twenty-six. So that there's the two houses, actually, in front of the Twenty and Twenty-two. Those two houses, I think the drainage is at the front of the, their houses, basically by the side of the Spear Street. That's a too-small pond, and everyone else.
So I, in moving just along, I, at the very least, to start, I think, the engineers for the ponds need to say, what, go back to the drawing board and recalculate what happened here with, with how much water was, you know, they were figuring initially that would, in a heaviest rain, what, what their calculations were.
Would you like to see some pictures?
Was it surface water?
No, this is, well, it's, it's, you know, rainwater, but we, we believe it's the pond, the pond's backing up, you have a backflow, because the, the outflow of the pond, this is what, of the pond couldn't handle the outflow. Water always travels downhill to the.
Is the outflow north?
Least resistance, and the least resistance was, I believe, from my limited construction and storage experience, is that it, it decided, here's a way out, let's go back up that drainage line of all the homes.
So the, the water got in your basement was not through windows or anything?
Not through windows.
Through stormwater?
Right.
You don't have a backflow preventer on it?
That's a good question.
Probably not.
No, I talked to Dave, he didn't think that.
Yeah.
So he said that's something that they had to do, you know, going forward. That's the discussion we're going to have tomorrow morning, until we, you know, I have a meeting with them.
We found that out in Butler Farms five years ago. A lot of the homes.
But they hadn't put a backflow.
There was a big rain then, too.
Right, then they didn't have backflow.
They didn't have a backflow. Anyone, sorry, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, no, that's a good question.
I think even the Butler Farm still has it. I think even this time, they had a couple of incidents.
Yes, I heard of, I heard of some flooded basements in Butler Farms, and my basement flooded, too.
Yeah, we have a system on our basement, and it couldn't, the pump couldn't handle it.
Yeah, our, our pump went out.
It a little bit of water wasn't flooding. It's not finished, either, but.
I, I actually, I actually do, but it, but it couldn't keep up. This was.
Yeah, ours couldn't do that.
Even when I had the emergency people coming, they, they had a two and a half inch line and another, they brought a smaller one. They were, they were actually, at that point then, three, three pumps going, and finally got a, to inch its way back down.
So if there are foundation drains in these buildings, they all go somewhere? Yeah, the question is further than going, if anything, something changed, right?
Yeah.
I mean, was it a big storm in it?
Oh, you mean the Eric's, I mean, not, two o'clock in the morning, I went to his house, he had probably close to twelve inches of snow.
Twelve.
Yeah.
Snow.
No, the snow, the water. Yes, twelve inches.
It could have been about four feet of snow.
Four feet of snow, exactly.
Yeah. Well, is that something that?
I'll talk to Tom about it.
Tom Di Pietro can look into and can.
Engineering on it, but you're right, water will go where it's supposed, I mean, where it. It will go where it can.
Yeah.
Right.
Likes to flow, usually likes to flow downhill.
At Butler Farms, we did recommend backflow preventers.
Right.
On this system, should be part of new construction. We will look at what changes occurred in that pond and whether or not it would have affected it in the rain event that we had.
Okay. I guess that, my last question, Kevin, would be, is quickly as possible, can it happen? Because I think what we have, first, a lot of people, a lot of people like to rebuild immediately. I think probably, if you ask everybody, I know, for one thing, I won't touch mine until I am sure that it's going to, not going to happen again. And go, to go twenty, I've been there almost twenty-two years, and to not have a drop, and then all of a sudden, you're, you're flooded, you start to say, do I want to even consider finishing my basement again? So.
Yeah, I, I will, I'll talk to Tom about what the hydraulics were of the, with flooding elsewhere and other stormwater ponds as well. I think the, the practical solution is a backflow preventer on the pipe, but let me talk to Tom about what they witnessed with that pond. Do I understand why?
It could be, it could be as simple as that, or it could be that, it might be also the height of the inlet coming versus what the outlet is, that buys some time. You know, they put in a, the whole idea, I think, of the two thousand and seventeen standard, from a, I think, my layman's view of it, is that over the years, they want to continue to slow water from going downhill to the lake or other neighborhoods, or something of that nature, and I think they've succeeded in doing that. And they, they do it in a, in a manner where they've, they've put berms in, in the ponds, where one section has to, like, fill up, which is where I believe our inlet is for the storm, for the foundation drains, is what I want to really call it. And that has to, that has to fill in by, from an eyes' view, without taking a transit out, is, it looks like that berm is higher than our highest point where water could come in, which, to me, it seems reversed, where it should be. Ours should be higher than that, to allow water to continue to come in, let it flow over that, which is almost essentially a dam, where it's going to flow over, and to the other section of the retention pond, to the, its ultimate end is the big catch basin there. All stuff I think Tom Di Pietro would need to also look at.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much for bringing it forward.
Thank you. I don't know if anybody else back there at Pinnacle?
Michael, do you, did you have a comment? Yes?
I had a question. I'm not sure.
Kevin's.
Not on the agenda.
Shoot me an email.
Relates.
Would you come up to the table, please?
My committee, I'm on Swift Street, and I'm a member of South Burlington Man Trust. My question relates to an item on page twenty-six of your package. You don't have to go there. It's about a three hundred and fourteen thousand budget surplus that you voted to put a hundred and ninety-five thousand of it into paving. That's on the balance sheet, it's a hundred and nineteen thousand. And I wondered whether, since the city is borrowing from the open space fund to fund park maintenance, why we couldn't maybe replenish that fund with the hundred and nineteen thousand dollars that is still available or sitting on the balance sheet. There's a second part to this question, whereas when this arrangement was made a couple of years ago, the council assured those in attendance that from that point onwards, the city would budget for park maintenance. And I'd like to see that item in the budget. Tom may know where it is.
The five percent?
The fifty percent of the open space.
For the project money? For open space project money?
For ten years, I think it is. But if, if there is a surplus available, why not put some of it back? And secondly, are we now budgeting for that expense, park maintenance?
So that was, that was a ten-year vote, and the projects will be done over the ten years. There's actually a report on that from Ashley on the eighteenth. So I'd encourage you to be there for that, so you can see what's been spent so far, what's planned to be spent, what the balance is in that fund. So we do, we do have that, and Ashley will be presenting that on the eighteenth for the open space fund.
Yeah, so in a sense, I'm requesting you use the surplus to pay back early.
So the, just to be clear, the balance, the fund balance was three hundred and fourteen thousand. I think Tim's motion was to keep eighty on the fund balance, and then the remainder of that would go towards paving, and that, that was done, just to clarify the numbers. I think that was like two hundred and forty-three thousand.
Three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars was the budget surplus, and a hundred and ninety-five went to paving, and a hundred and nineteen went, which was the balance, went on the balance. That's what the.
I don't know where those numbers come from.
Page twenty-six on your package.
So, oh.
A hundred and ninety-five or three.
So that's a mistake. That doesn't, that, we'll have to correct that in the minutes, that's not right.
You voted on it, on that date?
No, I don't think we've approved these minutes yet.
We haven't approved the minutes.
So, thank you, Michael.
Maybe you could make that change.
Yeah, those numbers are not right.
But either way, if it's eighty thousand dollars.
Okay, that's it.
Okay.
So we'll have to fix those when we do the minutes.
Yeah. Okay, Patrick?
Hello, good evening, Patrick Leduke, Woodbine Street, Mayfair Park. Really, just a quick comment, I wanted to just offer gratitude to the city council on behalf of all those that were kind of leading the charge and volunteering to build the food shelf. The city council as a body and as individuals have been very supportive of this effort. And I think you all should just be really aware, and I think the community should be really aware, of the power of our community to come together like this. We started with a very small group, as some of you know, and the list of volunteers, stakeholders, donors, and people that are participating in various ways is well above two hundred and fifty people at this point. So the community that we all live in has been really gracious and giving to their neighbors, and, and you all have, as well as individuals and as a council, and I just wanted to stop by and offer my gratitude.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work.
Very welcome.
How did the opening go?
The first morning, we served double digits of people coming in, and not quite as many the second day, but we're still, people are still finding us. Food donations are coming in really well, and lots of organizations are starting to partner with us, so it's coming really well.
And how much money has been raised so far? Do you, do you know? The treasurer's here, so I thought maybe.
So we're, we probably raised over twenty thousand. Right now, we've got about eleven in the account. And we're, so we're looking for sustaining donors now at this point to keep it going, but what could have cost us almost thirty thousand to get the facility up and running costs us less than ten because of in-kind donations that we were able to receive and volunteer work that we were able to get. So that was huge in terms of us being able to open and open much sooner than we had anticipated opening, so all good things.
I just remind people that you can drop off food on Wednesdays from ten to twelve.
And I'm going to leave some cards up here for you all to pick up later. If you need quick access to our website or our phone number, the information is available. Send people our way.
Thank you very much for all that you did. I also am going to suggest that we have a food box or a box in the foyer, foyer, and really try to remind each other on our city council nights to, to bring some food and, and deposit in that, and then certainly encourage the audience if they remember. Maybe we can have that in some, in our, our agenda going out, just to remind people that it would be convenient, because they'll walk it over to the food shelf if Wednesday morning's, it's not convenient. Oh, yeah, it's on the bottom of tonight's agenda, too, so just, just a reminder. Okay, thank you. Any other comments? I think I caught all the hands. Great, thank you. So we'll move on to announcements in the city manager's report. So, Tim, you want to? Oh, he isn't even here. He's delivering cookies. Okay. David, do you have anything to report?
I do not at this point, thank you.
Okay, Megan?
Yeah, I went to the ribbon cutting for the food shelf, and I thought it was.
Dave, does he have permission to give them all away?
I thought it was.
Many as you want.
A really meaningful event. Helen spoke at that event, as did several other people, you know, important people, including the Vermont Food Bank, was it the executive director? Holly Ruel, the principal, in addition to Patrick Leduke. And of course, we have our own Peter Carmoly, is that his last name, who is going to be directing that, and it was, I thought, a very meaningful, you know, event, something that we all could really, I think, embrace, and I'm glad to see that we've embraced it. Helen and I, and we might talk more about this, you know, later in the, the evening, but we went to meet John Tracy, the senior staffer of Senator Leahy in Burlington on Friday, along with Martin Laland and Maida Townsend, to talk about concerns related to the F-35 basing, and I think when we discussed the MOU, that's the more appropriate moment, perhaps, to talk about the content, but I thought it was a productive meeting.
You did, too?
Yeah, and I don't know, it seems like it's been busy, but.
We had a steering committee meeting.
We had a steering committee meeting.
You went, too?
Let other people fill that in.
Tom?
Nothing. I'm going to report.
Okay. Tim, do you have anything?
I went to the meeting with the school board last Monday, and we had a brief tour of the high school. There wasn't a lot of time to see everything. We were, we saw a brief presentation on, on Plan Eight, I think it is, that they're proposing. It's over two hundred million dollars for replacement of Tuttle in the high school. I went to coffee with a cop on Saturday at Starbucks on Shelburne Road. Chief was there, and some of the other police people were there, and some members of the public, so there was a nice array of, of sliced donuts and historys and, you know.
Tom.
A graph of coffee, so it was a fun time to sit and talk to people. Also attended the domestic violence discussion, and thank you very much for the way I did have a successful session. So great, great discussion, a lot of good ideas, difficult problem, but good conversation.
Terry Gross just interviewed, today, she was interviewing a singer whose father killed her mother and then turned the gun on himself. It was.
Oh, I was hearing the tail end of that, yes.
Yes, so very close to, you know, what we experienced here last year, so, yeah.
Yeah, it happens to everyone, I mean, a lot of different kinds of people. So I went to the food shelf opening as well, I, the steering committee, we had, I thought a, not a huge discussion about the school proposal, but we did have some discussion, which I thought was really helpful, and got to ask some questions. Of course, you know, the number one, or the biggest one, seems to be, so what will it cost me as a taxpayer? And they assured us that they're working on finding that number and really getting it based on exactly what the building would look like, and so it's a harder number, not a, a guesstimate. Then I met, Kevin and I meet every, well, it's not every week, but every other week or once a month with Patrick Leduke and Jennifer Murray, the librarian, and we talk about the library and those kinds of issues, so we had that meeting. I think that's all the little meetings I had for the city, so that's what I have to report. So you're?
Thanks, Helen. I want to talk a little bit about the bridge over Shun Pipe.
Old Waters.
Old Waters, trouble waters off of Campbell Avenue. But just very quickly, a couple of other things. Our sched, your schedule is busy here the next few days, week and a half, really Tuesday. Tomorrow night, you're at Tuttle Library for the seven o'clock meeting of the steering committee, and that is with legislative delegation. We got a good turnout of legislators from both the House and the Senate, and so if there are issues, Helen's passed on an issue to me, if there are other issues that you feel are legislative issues that we need to bring up with our legislators, please, please bring them up tomorrow, or shoot me a note on it. Friday at eight AM, you have the special meeting of the, of the.
Friday at eight AM, you have the, uh, special meeting of the, um, uh, of the council and the public hearing on the LDRs. And then Wednesday of next week at eleven AM, both the, um, ribbon cutting for Market Street and the groundbreaking for the community center will occur, one after the other. We'll gather right at the, um, right at the entrance to the, to the school, and we'll cut the ribbon there where the barrier is that blocks traffic so that we don't block traffic. And then we'll just walk across the street to the property and, and do the shovels. We'll have speeches there and so on. So, I know, I know you, some of you cannot make it because of work, but if, if folks that can make it are invited, members of the public absolutely invited. I'm going to Harborview on Wednesday, this Wednesday at eleven, to talk to the residents at Harborview about current issues in South Burlington. The airport, NCP Sound Study Report is now posted on the btvsound.com website. And so, we have until November twenty-fifth for more comments, and so let me know, take a look at that. Let me know if you want to have a comment discussion on the November eighteenth agenda, and we'll put that on the eighteenth because they have to be in by the twenty-fifth. Um, and then lastly, I want to, uh, turn to the bridge issue.
Kevin, just a question on that. You want us to individually give you comments or do you want us to, on the eighteenth, vet the comments and have a discussion?
Yeah, what, if you have comments on it and want to have it on the agenda for the eighteenth, so you, the, so you all can, uh, discuss it and then have a council feedback, that'd be best, I think. But if, if you like what you see and, and it pretty much follows on what we've been hearing from the NCP, that's fine. But, but if you want a last chance to comment on it, that needs to happen prior to the twenty-fifth. Um, Justin is out of state right now, but he has been in constant contact with the, with, and really a lot of contact with the state. The bridge is closed. I was over there today and I got around the side of it to the cliff and it is, you see these pictures and it's just amazing the amount of damage that was done, members of the public. Yeah, there are some in the back too.
Are there some in the back?
Yeah.
It's pretty startling.
And so, we don't even want people walking across it now. So, the bridge is closed and unless, until further notice, and I think you can anticipate that it's gonna be closed. We are working with V-Trans on, um, signals and synchronizing the signals in Williston and South Burlington to try to deal with the added pressure on Williston Road.
Yeah.
And, and whether, I haven't talked to Justin about this. This is very new, whether or not a, a light, a temporary light can go up on, um, on Gregory Drive or not, I don't know. Justin and his team are meeting with the state on the twelfth of this month to discuss emergency funding. As you'll remember from an email that Megan initiated, uh, the plan was to replace the bridge in 2022. It's about a two million dollar project, half South Burlington, half Williston. So, and then we were gonna try to defray a lot of that cost with grants. Obviously, this accelerates that, and so our team is gonna talk to the state about emergency funding. Our funding is available to us in the, in the CIP, but I think Williston's got a bigger challenge in trying to identify funding for their side of the-
Would this qualify for some of the emergency funding that the government is requesting? I would think.
Uh-huh.
Call two-one-one.
Yeah, well, I don't know that he's, unless it happened today sometime, did he declare emergency?
I thought I heard on the news that he's requested one point two million, one point five million. I don't know.
The FEMA won't really look at this issue until he declares an emergency, so FEMA is aware.
I don't know.
But-
I heard something about an emergency being declared myself.
So FEMA certainly would reach out to FEMA. Question is, um, what FEMA would fund, but we will look into it.
There's definitely a heck of a traffic impact because I was out there this morning as well, and traffic was backed up from the intersection of Industrial Avenue and Route Two, you know, where the fork is, all the way to South Brownell, North Brownell Road. I'm just solid, and, and, and that was at nine-twenty, which wasn't exactly, still rush hour. So, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a challenge until, for a while.
Well, we can only, uh, in the spring, we can only anticipate more erosion.
Right.
So, it, it is possible that this will cause us to remove the bridge completely because of the lack of support on both ends that will be further eroded with the spring melt.
So, it doesn't fall into the spring.
Yes.
Oh, and do what they did on Lakes, we put a ferry in temporarily.
Yeah, right.
Let me talk to Trey Pecor.
Maybe Tom Sawyer is available.
In Wharf, Finn, right?
Zip lines. Just remember how fast the, the bridge on Lake Champlain was rebuilt.
Yep.
This could get, this is pretty short. It can get done pretty quickly, if the need is there.
And they had ferries there, yep.
That's what-
So, anyway, it closed for the foreseeable future, if not permanently. It's a dangerous situation. We don't even want people walking on it. And we are contacting all sources of potential funding or assistance in, in conjunction with Williston, and the state is working on the traffic issues, so. Any, anything more detailed, I'd have to get to Justin tomorrow, but-
Are the, are the mortgage lines, are those natural gas?
No, I think, well, the AT&amp;T guys were there trying to re, reroute their, their lines. Those are, those appear to be conduits of some type. I don't, probably not natural gas, but it could be. Could be. I think they're telecom.
Okay. Yes?
The, the city or the public works department publish some alternate routes so that people don't go there. If they want to go to Williston, to the big box stores or go out and supply that they use old-
Use eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
That would probably be your fastest-
Or sign up with the information.
Put a notice up on the website and on social media.
How do we tell Google Maps that that bridge is out? Does anybody know how to do that?
Waze does.
Paul, you mind?
Yeah, I would try to tell Google that because they'll just take that and just route you somewhere else.
Aren't a whole lot of routes.
No.
They're-
Gregory Drive, yeah.
Williston Road.
Williston Road. Go through Heinsberg.
Oh.
There's not much to do, is there?
Yeah. St. George and find some, let him turn, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you could do that, right.
Well, and our, what do you call it, Van Sickle?
Van Sickle, right.
That's quite the thing.
Yes, but that's fine, yeah.
That's why I have to bridge out. We'll have to survive the holidays.
Okay, thank you. So, moving on to item six, the consent, consent agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve, A, consider and sign dispersments, and B, approve the minutes with the correction of the numbers for our- That was the sep-
Could you give the correct numbers to that?
Sort of back up to the warrant, we're gonna take out the two million.
That's right.
Transfer, but other than that, um, we'll, we're looking to approve the warrant and move in that, the other discussion down to the city school collaboration. And, and thanks to Michael to, for pointing out the error in the minute, so that should read, the fund balance is three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. There was a motion made by Tim and approved by the council to keep eighty thousand dollars on the, in our fund balance. And to move the rest of the money, two hundred and forty-three thousand, into additional paving money, and that was done. So, the minutes are, need to be corrected to reflect those numbers.
Minutes from which meeting?
Which meeting, November?
September seventeenth.
September sixth.
Well, this is November, isn't it? That's incorrect. It should be September third and sixteenth, not November.
Sixteenth.
September, not November.
Yep.
Yeah, it says November, which should re, but should be, the correction is September sixteenth minutes for the fund balance, okay.
I don't remember making a motion and voting on it, but I, I just know we had a discussion. We came to some consensus.
Oh, no, I think we voted it out.
We actually had to.
We had to, because it's a-
To be able to utilize fund balance.
For minutes, just say members agreed, and we don't have a first and second, but it doesn't matter. Move this on forward.
I'm, I'm confident that we have it both on video and audio to, to reflect the, what actually happened, but that is, we should definitely get the minutes corrected.
I think it was a motion by Tim and seconded by somebody, probably Megan or something.
I should get Michael to run through that.
She always second stuff. She's good for that.
But it's good, it's good.
I have for a second if it's a good motion. It's a good motion. All right, so are you ready for this vote? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Any votes? All right. Moving on to item seven, discussion with Blaine Bolan of Tyler Tech regarding the citywide reappraisal.
Good evening. How many of you know me? Todd LeBlanc, the assessor. This is Blaine Bolan. He's the project director for Tyler Technologies, who is doing our reappraisal. Kevin asked us to come in, in front of you, give us a little rundown and maybe answer questions if you're betting. I'll turn it over to Blaine.
Awesome. Uh, what I like to do is kind of run you through the phases. So, what's gonna happen on the project? What does it entail? And the first step is data collection. So, um, we have a crew here, showed up here this morning. I had them do some office work, so they're gonna start out in the field tomorrow. And data collection, we're just gonna be verifying the information interior and exterior that the assessor has on record. So, we're gonna knock on the door, we're gonna talk to property owners, we're gonna do interior inspections, we're gonna walk around the exterior of the home, the structure, and verify that the measurements are correct. We're doing this on every property in the city, so whether it's a commercial property, condominium property, or just residential property, we're gonna be visiting every single property.
Have you started that at all?
We're gonna be starting in the field tomorrow morning, ma'am.
Oh, because I thought we had a note left at our door that someone had done an exterior walk on our property for reappraisal. I mean, we weren't there, so I have no idea.
Burlington is in process, but-
Yeah, but we live in South Burlington. They're not looking at our house.
No, we haven't had any boots on the ground yet.
Oh, okay. I assumed it was bona fide, okay.
Our data collectors are gonna have a, a yellow vest. It's gonna say, uh, City of South Burlington Reassessment running in the back. And I believe we're taking photos for IDs. When?
Uh, photos we're taking today for IDs. Uh, I think they're gonna try to make them up tomorrow over PD.
Okay.
That'll show that they're associated with the city.
And then I'm gonna be making some car signs. Um, I'm not gonna do magnetic signs at this point. They have a tendency to blow off, but it'll say City Reassessment, and, and the gentleman will stick them in the car windows, curbside and roadside. So, people, if their car's parked and they're out walking around the neighborhood, they'll know what that car, you know, whose car it is. Part of the data collection phase on when we're doing interior inspections is, we're attempting three times to enter a person's home. So, if they're not home, say from eight to five, then the data collector goes back to everybody's house that they went to that day where they weren't home. They're gonna try it again. They're gonna knock on the door again and see if somebody's home. And if they're not, then we're gonna go out on a Saturday and we're gonna visit everybody's property that we was at for the whole week where nobody was home. We're gonna try again. And then after that, we're gonna, we're gonna send them a, a notice, a data mailer, and ask them to fill it out and give us the information about the interior of their property. After that, we're gonna do data entry, so we're just gonna take all the information that we've obtained, anything that's changed, and we're gonna enter it into the assessor's CANA system. Once all that's done, we're gonna start analysis. So, we're gonna look at last three years of sales previous to the assessment date. It's just called analysis. We're gonna analyze the sales. What are properties being bought and sold for in a, in a given neighborhood? We build the cost tables, we tweak them, um, we establish values, and then we're gonna do review. So, then we review the values that we've established by neighborhood and make sure that they make sense based on the sales. Then after that is, is hearings, where property owners have a chance, first of all, to come and talk to Tyler, give us information we didn't have before. And there will be adjustments made. There'll be adjustments made to values based on those. When that's all done, then we have formal hearings, more formal process, and then we're all done.
How are we gonna notify homeowners about the yellow vest and check the ID? Could that be done somehow through Front Porch Forum or?
We've got an ad going in the paper, right?
There's an ad going in the paper. We've already had a, a news release, a press release in the paper. I believe for, at least for the first month, we're gonna put one in weekly. After that, it may be just a smaller ad saying, here's where we're going to be. We're developing a dedicated webpage for information. Correlate and put stuff on, uh, Front Page Forum and whatever place that, we're in in that area. I don't know anything about Front Page Forum, so I don't know, but she explained to me that there's different sections and-
Front Porch Forum.
Front Porch. That's not little I know. Um, Facebook, wherever the social medias that she can deal with, we'll spread it. Website being the biggest. I'll be the point person here, obviously, in the city for questions. There will be a dedicated phone line that Tyler will address questions. Um, we also have an email address where people can ask questions. We want this to be as, as non-impact to the homeowners as possible. We don't want anybody jumping off bridges. It's not the end of the world. Let the people come in, do their job. They're not gonna tell anybody there's a homeowner lease on the wall. They just want to know what the type of materials that you have in the house are, and they'll go on their merry way. Biggest question that a lot of people come up with is, are my taxes gonna go up? Some yes, some no. You don't get to make any more money off the reappraisal, okay? We're just trying to make it equitable so that everybody's paying their fair share. Some will go up, some could go down, some will stay the same. When it's all said and done, the grant lists will have changed. I foresee it going up because the market is up, and when that happens, the tax rate goes down. So, so the worry of, are my taxes gonna go up, is, is a lot of times unfounded, although it does happen. They're gonna have vests. I've, I've told them, you gotta be as courteous as possible, no strong-arming. Uh, I will be doing follow-ups with property owners to make sure that they were courteous, if they were there, if they say they were there, did they do things? Blaine will do the same thing. We want to make it as comfortable as possible going forward.
How much of the house do you visit?
Much of the house? Every bit of the house. So, we're not, my data collectors are instructed not to necessarily invade privacy. They don't need to go into anybody's bedroom. They just need to verify. Anytime I've done this personally, a homeowner is with you, obviously, and they will say, this is a bedroom, that is a bedroom, and now we have a bedroom count. And if there's four, yes. Homeowner said there's four. I walked by four rooms. It could very well be a bedroom. There's four bedrooms. They may stick their head in the bathroom, a vacant bathroom, obviously, to verify plumbing counts, verify what is a full bath, what is a half bath. They will go into the basement. Their job when they're in there is to help establish quality and to look for condition problems. I'm of the personal opinion that a lot of people will maintain the outside of their home in an effort not to offend their neighbors or aggravate them, if you will, and the money is spent there. And the inside is, uh, is left for the extra money we have when we have it. So, the outside can look very nice and you may have some condition problems on the inside. So, they're gonna look for, for, for stains in, in the living room seating. They may have come from a bathroom upstairs that never got fixed, cracks in the foundation, um, those types of things, so that will affect the condition. Updates. It's very possible walking a home built in the seventies and you stepped right back into time. You're in nineteen seventy when you're walking that home. It can affect the value. As well, I've taken a nineteen seventies home and you've updated the kitchen and have updated the bathrooms, and now it's, it's not a nineteen seventies home necessarily anymore. So, those are things that affect value, and that's what the data collector looks for.
Think of this, oh, excuse me, think of this as if you were purchasing a new property. You were looking for a new house and you were visiting properties. The things you would look at, like Blaine says, is there water in the basement? Is it outdated? Is it updated? Are there too many or too few bedrooms, bathrooms? Are there too many or too few bedrooms, bathrooms? Is it needing of a roof, a heating system? These are the things that would make you think about the value of what you're trying to buy. And is what the person's asking the true market value? Sometimes it will be, sometimes it won't be. Generally, when you find the house that you both agree on, you have a willing buyer and willing seller, you come to a market value. That's what we're going to do for you.
Can I ask you, we had, I can't remember when you got here. If you were here for the conversation at the very beginning about some flooding of some homes on.
At the meeting tonight.
At the meeting tonight at Pinnacle. Well, there were.
Six homes.
Six homes that were flooded, most of which, if not all, had finished basements. And I guess, you know, they had up to a foot of water. So they're not very nicely finished at this point. They need to be refinished if they can figure it out. So, and that just happened. So by the time you knock on their door, it may not be redone, yet their current appraisal is based on, let's say, a finished basement. How does that factor into your work? Do you assume they're going to redo it, or do you say, "Man, this is less value because the basement's a mess now"?
Everything we do in Vermont is based on April 1st, the value on April 1st. Literally, if you had a vacant lot on April 1st and on April 2nd you dropped the modular homeowner, it would still be the value on April 1st. Just like, God forbid, you have a house on April 1st and it burns down, okay, on April 2nd. Tax-wise, it's still there on April 1st. There's remedies for that as far as taxes go. So on April 1st, and in this case, it's 2021, this is a long process. This next year's tax bills in July will not reflect the values from the reappraisal. It'll be the next year. So in a case like this where we've had some flooding, they will need to get permits to redo their basements. Permits will come through. We'll check them.
So that's how you pick up?
It's, it's, the people who own these basements are saying, you know, "I'm being taxed on this," and that's absolutely right. But unfortunately, on April 1st of this year, it was done as finished basements, so that's the way it stays.
Um, is, a question from the audience?
I have a question about solar installations, whether they would add to the value of a home if you have solar panels and convert it on your home.
We don't, in South Burlington, we haven't added value for solar panels.
We do have an add.
We do not.
We do not.
No. There are studies that show in Florida, California, there is a value. We're in Vermont. People who generally do that are people who are looking to live greener. It's not because they're going to save money for a long time. It's, a lot of people would buy a house and say, "You know, there's some solar panels on that. I'm not necessarily about solar panels or having to deal with solar panels or the batteries that go along with it, or the inverters that go along with it." And is the value? It just doesn't happen in Vermont.
Actually, the lady way in the back had her hand up earlier.
Did the New York State, the taxes were based on square footage, number of rooms, et cetera, not like your furnishings or your countertops, et cetera. Now, it sounds like you're doing it differently here.
Well, the value, the value would be based on, there are valuation components and there's cost components. So one of the first things you have to do is develop what's called the cost new of the structure, and then there's less depreciation.
The cost what?
Cost new.
Cost new.
So you start kind of like you do for an insurance company, the company, you have to have insurance on your home. But what's it going to cost if your home burns down or is destroyed? So you have cost new of the home, and then given its age, it has depreciation. That, and then it's based on square foot, that's a price per square foot. So those are all, that's a cost component. The quality of the home, there are some very nice homes, and there are homes that are not so nice or more cheaply built, if you will. So you have the quality. All of that goes into a valuation component or a cost component. The values are based on sales. So, I don't know if this analogy will fly very well, but I have seen homes that are half a million dollar homes. Why they built it there, I don't know. I don't remember at the time whether or not the landfill came in before or they went ahead and built, you know, they knew the landfill was there or it came in later. But you'll never sell the home for a half a million dollars to the landfill that's, you know, half a block away. Excuse me. And you get all the dirt and the dust from the trucks. You get the smell. You get the trash. You get whatever. So it may have cost a million dollars or a half a million to build a home, but the value is what it would sell for. And it's not going to sell for a half a million dollars. So there's a little bit of difference. We don't value furnishings. I don't care how nice your, yeah, how clean it is, how much you spend on your furniture, or the pictures on the walls and stuff like that has no reflection on its value.
But hardwood floors versus fake wood floors, is that of a difference?
Those are cost components, and they also have to do with the quality of the home. So, yeah, I guess a good analogy would be, nobody's going to build a 5,000 square foot house and go to Walmart and buy their plumbing fixtures. They probably won't even buy them a Loser Bernard. They're going to be custom plumbing fixtures. And by the same token, nobody's going to build a very small cabin-type home and put Mohn and Price Fister Fosses. It costs two, three, four, or $500 in that home. So it's a quality thing. Most bigger homes, they're going to spend the money on the quality of the components in the home, the plumbing fixtures, the flooring, the countertops, the cabinets. Smaller homes, most people aren't going to spend that kind of money. So it's a quality, the quality of construction.
Yeah, I've lived here like for 28, 29 years, and I've had one reassessment. I've heard people in my neighborhood, and know for a fact, they're going to say, "Not letting that person in," and I know people that didn't. Secondly, I know in my neighborhood, a lot of people have redone their basements because we have one-story homes. And so that person never saw them. The person that did my evaluation then, I didn't have a lot of faith that they were well-educated in how to assess the value of things. So I'd like to know, what is the education of the people that are around construction that your people do? And what are they going to do when somebody says, "Not letting you in"? Because I let people in. I didn't say, "No, you can't come in." I out.
A property owner has the right to kick us off their property completely. So not only do they have the right to not let you in their home, there's nothing that we can do about that. And we will use the information that's currently on record. It's going to stay the same. We're not going to make a change. If they totally kick us off the property, then again, we're going to, we're going to estimate, to the best of our knowledge, there's ways that data collectors are trained to estimate the exterior of the home in what they can see. They'll also be taking photographs of the homes. So from, from the public right away, from the, for the front of the home, and then if they're on the property, can get on the property, they're going to take one from the rear. And there are ways, at least for the square foot, the sketch, there's ways to verify some of that information. Data collectors are just that. They're data collectors. Their job is not to know value or establish value. They're not trained in that. Their job is to know how to read and tape measure and know how to take a three-dimensional structure and turn it into a TD, a two-dimensional drawing, and then just verify that information. So if they're looking at a sketch, it's basically the shape of the foundation. Do they know how to read that? Do they know where the front of the house is and the side of the house is compared to that sketch? And just verify that information. That's their job. So they're not, they're not trained or educated in the value process.
So when you add the value component, who does that?
That's my job.
That's your job?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say, so the size of the lot is also considered as part of that reassessment?
It would be, and that's whatever the deed would say for the size of your lot. The data collectors will not be walking and measuring people's land.
No, but does that function into the reassessment?
Yes, ma'am, it does. There is a value for the land. So there are two valuation components. One is the structure or structures, and one is the land. And when you put those two together, that's the overall value of the property, and sales will still dictate what land is worth.
So to use your analogy of the landfill, we don't have a landfill anymore, but we have an airport.
Yes, ma'am.
So when you do the evaluation of the homes near the airport, you have already factored that even if it's a half a million dollar home that's built next to the runway, it's never going to sell for $500,000, so it's going to be valuing, valuing lower?
Sales in that area, ma'am, have already taken into account the issue with the airport.
So that's, that's sort of the.
The three years' worth of sales that we'll be reviewing to see what properties in those neighborhoods sell for will show up. A lot of people say, and I had my phone ring the day the plane showed up, my phone rang. And the simple answer is, until we have dedicated sales information from properties that are being impacted by those planes, we cannot change the values, just because we think. When people start to pay less for those houses, and we can recognize that as a trend, then we can do something. Until then, we can't. We may find people flock in all of a sudden because they love planes. We don't know. Okay? At that point, maybe the values will go up. We don't know. But I can't sit there and say, "I like planes, therefore, I'm going to raise all the values." If evidence shows it, we will take care of it.
Well, I'm a little concerned because whoever did it the last time, I think it was your company?
Not possible. Yes, ma'am.
Well, I don't know what they, they obviously didn't even look at my house because, thank goodness, I went. And then when I went to, to fight the appraisal, they're like, they wouldn't even change it. They didn't even have correct information on anything. And if you're comparing sales, you can't do that in my neighborhood because there's houses who have rivers running under them, which you didn't take into account. And there's people who are stupid enough to pay way too much money in my neighborhood for a house that isn't worth it. So what, so Todd, you're not allowed to leave.
Why do I know who that is? Hi, Lisa.
So I apologize. Maybe you have, was there a question that I missed in your statement?
Well, you're going to, are these the same people that you had way back then?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay. So hopefully, they're going to be better and actually look at a property because they did not look at mine. I was willing to even let them come in the house, but nobody ever contacted me back again after I replied. It said, "Yeah, you can come in."
I can't speak to the past, ma'am. All I can do is move forward. And the career that I have, are Tyler employees and have been for a while, so they have more experience than the people that were hired here locally and trained to do the job the last time.
So then, are you going to be open-minded if people are coming to see you?
I have personally always been open-minded, yes, ma'am.
Because they weren't where I went.
Anybody who has issues, get home.
I have a question about scheduling. Is there any way to know, like, when you're going to be in our neighborhood?
Yes, ma'am.
To be able to time to let you in?
There should be some press releases that says the data collectors are going to be in this neighborhood. Or they will be starting in this neighborhood. It really doesn't take them long to move through a neighborhood or an area. So you may be surprised as, you know, within a week, two different notices have gone out about data collectors being in the neighborhood.
Monica?
Just in terms of safety, if you're already taking out the pictures of the people that are showing up, can you guys put the pictures of the assessors on the website as well so that a resident can officially recognize someone?
Yeah.
And then?
They will be.
They will be on the website?
Yep. They'll be on the website, pictures, and a vehicle description and license plate number for the cars that they'll be driving. PD has a copy of that, and several people in City Hall here have a copy of that.
Monica, did you have another question?
I guess it's just in terms of if there's children at home. I mean, you guys, if a child, if it's a young person answering a door, do you have a policy about not entering?
No, they're not allowed to enter the property. They will ask. Usually, okay, I'm of the opinion that they're going to be 18 or a little bit younger. I would hope that a nine or 10-year-old isn't home all by themselves. So if they're 16, 17, 18 years old, I would hope that they have at least the authority or permission of their parents to give the authority. Yes, it's okay for you to be outside, and so the data collector can do their job outside. If they've been instructed by their parents to say, "No, I don't want you on my property at all," that's fine. They're going to come back at 5:00. And if nobody's home then, then they're going to come back on a Saturday. If nobody's home then, you'll get a notice, and we're not going to come back to your property as an appointment. We're going to ask you to give us some information about the interior of the property, and we're going to go with the information that we have on the exterior of the property.
Okay, Tim?
Good question. So the people going in, doing the field surveys, have they undergone background checks at all?
Yes, all of the employees, all of Tyler employees go through a background check. It's part of the hiring process. If they don't pass, we can't hire them.
And if they stay with the company for years, do they, do they redo the background check?
No, they don't. Just one when they get hired, yes.
And can you remind me what valid sales are again?
Valid sales, as far as when they come through?
Yeah.
If you, if you sold your house to your brother, that probably wouldn't be a valid sale.
Because the price might be affected by that?
There may be some kind of agreement behind the scenes. If you can get as deep into cash back at closing, could throw off a valid sale. You could buy a house that included a boat and the sale price didn't indicate that. It could be something that wasn't exposed to the market, okay? My brother-in-law's looking for a house. He's moving in from San Diego. You want to, yeah, sure. It could be somebody who held a mortgage. Yep, you give me this much, I'll hold the mortgage for you. Different things like that. You generally have to have a willing buyer and a willing seller. It's got to be exposed to the market, conventional financing. Gives you a valid sale.
And what happens when a resident doesn't ever mow their lawn and it turns into complete six-foot-high weed fest?
Oh, our data collector's going to wade through the mess, and they're still going to measure the house, and there's still going to be a value based on it. So.
Would that affect the condition and the value?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't affect the condition of it. If I waded through all the tall grass and I found a halfway decent-looking house, it would be valued as a halfway decent-looking house, yeah.
So you don't have to mow your lawn?
That's actually a joke, that's actually a cartoon that I had seen that was in a newspaper where a gentleman comes in and says, "I'm going, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to contest my value," and they said, "Why?" He said, "Because, you know, my value went up." And they said, "We never knew you had a house." He said, "All I did was mow my lawn."
Yes.
So just to be clear, I just want to make sure I understand what you said. Letting the, letting your company onto the property is an option for homeowners? Letting them inside is an option?
Yes.
And if they're not on the property and they're not in the house, then the homeowner provides this information?
They will be asked to provide interior information about bedrooms, bathrooms, remodeling gates and stuff like that.
So is that information, when you published about this taking place now, going to be made public, that it is optional, that this company is in the house and on the property? And if they're not, then homeowners provide that information back?
I will say that the city has asked us in our contract, just as an FYI, that we attempt an interior inspection three times. It is very important that we get into as many properties as we can, and we will have to provide the assessor's office and anybody in the council that would ask what our interest, entrance rate is. How many properties did you get into?
I understand that's your motive, but my question is, so that homeowners know their rights about, about people being on the property and in the home, and then what is expected for them to provide back if your company's not interested?
I would have to let the council.
So I guess that's one question for.
Let me jump in. This does not apply to just the reappraisal. Nobody in this city has to let me, as the assessor, on their property, okay? They fall under my office. You do not have to let them on the property. Our goal is to make things as fair as possible for everybody, and the more information we can gather, whether it be actually laying eyes on the property or getting a data mailer, that's the best thing we can do. Finished basements are difficult for us because permitting, you don't need an interior, you don't need a permit until it hits $5,000. Somebody can finish off their basement for less than $5,000, okay? Doesn't need a permit, never happens. Two years later, they put a bathroom in the basement. They put up a wall. Now they have a bedroom. These things happen over time. We don't know they're there, okay? Finish over a garage. A lot of times, there's room. We'll make a bonus room. We'll do something. We just don't know about it. These are the things we're trying to pick up on. If, if people are concerned about letting somebody in their house, don't. That's simple. If they want, they can call me. I'll do it, okay? Safety first. No ifs, ands, or buts.
But at the same time, we want to try to make this as accurate as possible, and you, and if it, if you did need a, what do you call it? The paper to let you do the addition or whatever it is.
Permit.
The permit, then you can corroborate that. So if the information that a homeowner gives you in a written form doesn't sync with the permits that they've gotten, then I guess you have a conversation with them. And so we're not encouraging people to lie about the masturbate. And so we're not encouraging people to lie about the master bath they just put in and just sort of forget about, oh gee, I forgot to mention that.
And part of the, part of the analysis, a part of what I'll do when I look at sales and I'm, I'm sure Todd probably does this, but you'd be amazed what you can find on the internet. So if you put your house up for sale, somebody probably has it out there. I don't know, I think Zillow, there, there's just various types of internet-based things where you can find information and you'll see pictures of the interior. It'll tell you where the basement's finished and stuff like that. So those are the things, if, if a sale looks squarely to me, I'm going to research it and I'm going to go on the net.
Can we just have the phone number of the, the city office? People should call if they have questions.
My, my number's 846-4103.
Okay, well, thank you very much. There's no other questions, counsel? Okay, thanks. Okay, item eight. Review and possibly approve the proposal from Earth Economics to develop a valuation model for various and many natural resource-related features of the southeast quadrant as a component of the overall interim zoning studies currently being undertaken. So has the council had time to review that to their satisfaction? Okay. Are you ready to vote on it or?
I, I.
Go ahead.
I was going to move that we approve the proposal from Earth Economics to develop a valuation model for various and many natural resource-related features of the southeast quadrant as a component of the overall interim zoning studies currently being undertaken.
Could I ask?
Yes.
Could you add? It's not my job here.
Oh, and the southeast quadrant and potentially elsewhere?
Well, I was going to say and authorize the, the city manager to negotiate a contract and allow the city manager to negotiate.
Terms of the contract?
Yeah.
And allow the city manager to negotiate the terms of the contract.
So you're expanding a little from the southeast quadrant to elsewhere in the city?
Yeah.
That's what you just said.
You are?
No, that's what you just said.
No, I just, I just want the authority to negotiate.
Yes, well, that can be part of the negotiation, so yeah, so that's fine.
That's, his motion included that language, I just, right? Isn't that what you just?
Negotiate the contract is what Kevin suggested. Now you're asking about expanding it to all of.
No, I say studies currently being undertaken, comma, the contract would be negotiated by the city manager.
Okay, I thought you had said in elsewhere.
No, I was guessing what he was going to say.
Oh, oh, okay, so you aren't. So your motion is the current
Yep.
proposal and to give the city manager the ability to negotiate the final contract?
Yep.
Within the $45,000?
Forty-six.
Forty-five-six?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
There is, yes, and I would like us
Discussion.
to go beyond the southeast quadrant since that's what our committee is looking at. It's beyond the southeast quadrant. We're looking at open spaces north of Williston Road. We're looking west of Spear.
That could be part of this negotiation.
Yeah.
Oh, Mike Costman.
So I'm just going to make my statement now. So I'm going to vote against this. We've already talked about it twice before and I just, I don't think this is the right prioritization of $45,000. I think there are other parts of town that could be better served with this money. I'd rather spend it on the airport. We have limited resources. It's been on the council parking lot since I've been on the council, so I get why we're finally spending money on it. I just, I'm not sold that it's the right thing to do right now because we've already studied the southeast quadrant and I just don't think this thing's going to tell us anything we don't already know or have us do anything we're not already doing. So I'm against this, this motion, but for this report.
Thank you. Tim, do you have a?
Yeah, I just, I don't want the price to go over forty-five-six. So if the current proposal by that firm is for forty-five-six for the scope that's been presented by them, then if we go beyond it, it might be expanding the cost of the, of the product, of the study.
I'm not in favor of it being a blank check either. What I, I'll just share an email that Alan Strong sent to me. I asked if he could attend and he couldn't. But he said that what would come out of this that would be useful? Because he says the general information you can get anywhere, right? The general information is that ecosystem services tend to provide benefits of $4 to $11 for every dollar invested in conservation. And he goes on to say, "If you look at the cost of development, most studies suggest that developed land costs somewhere around $1.16 for each dollar collected in tax revenue. Thus, commercial development and agricultural land actually subsidize the community services needed by residential development." As always, there are caveats, right? Costs are less for compact development and greater for sprawl. This is the chair of the Open Space IZ Committee. But what he said that this report would allow is site-specific information. So I think that if we could perhaps look at areas that our committee is putting forward as priorities to keep that cost even narrower, more narrow, narrower, that could be of interest too with regard to the negotiation.
Well, being the devil's advocate with the data you just presented, we don't even have to do the study now because we have enough information to make a judgment.
No, 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 that's just general.
I know, but I mean, we're also talking in general terms here about the value of land, undeveloped versus developed land, what those infrastructure costs are, what's the value of a natural stormwater, you know, piece of property that can, you know, is a wetland, all those things. So, I mean, there's two sides of the coin, right? I mean, if you have this firm do this, you'll get a quantifiable study with their methods on specific pieces of property or areas, right?
That's it.
Right, and that southeast quadrant right now happens to be the place in the city that has the most attention for some sort of conservation. And right now, the TDRs are focusing the ability to add conservation easements in there when the TDRs are sold. So that's the way, that's, it makes perfect sense to, to have Kevin negotiate this contract for what's specified in that proposal from that company.
Yes and no. I think that if we look at parcels that are west of Spear and north of Williston Road that might be cited for dense affordable housing. And our committee has put that, that specific parcel forward as really, you know, priority with regard to conservation for our, our tree systems as well as our waterway systems, okay? That, I think, is what this report could give us, is that site-specific. Does it make more sense to have dense affordable housing there or to keep that tree canopy and, and that, that water filtration system?
I don't see the difference between a, a piece of land that's in one location or a piece of land that's in the southeast quadrant. If it's
I'll tell you what the difference is.
undeveloped forest land, it's going to have the same value undeveloped versus what it would be developed.
This is, this is not an objective thing that we're looking for out of our council, I hope. What we're looking for is the values of this community. And what I would put forward to you, and thanks to Alan, I'm able to speak with some authority, but this is coming from Alan, that it is really our Muddy Brook and our Potash Brook that are the really key areas. So it's not just the southeast quadrant open space. It's looking at specific areas in the city and that's based on our waterways.
There are lots of tributaries in the southeast quadrant that contribute to Muddy Brook.
That's right.
So whether it contributes to Potash Brook and it's not in the southeast quadrant or it's somewhere else, they're going to have similar values. I, I don't think it's worth expanding this thing and going above forty-five-six.
I agree with you, but I would like us to carve out which areas we'd like them to look at then.
So you want to change the contract and specify different areas?
If Kevin is able to negotiate, I would think that it would be possible for us to say, "Could you focus on this area north of the airport and west of Spear Street?" And really, you know, then look at areas that aren't as key in our Open Space IZ report that's being developed. Take that out.
If they can, if he can negotiate it such that they can look at those lands and not change the price
Yes.
and still deliver the same report, that's fine with me, but I, I just don't want to go over the price that's been quoted so far.
I agree with you.
I don't think anyone wants to.
Kevin, how do you see this negotiating?
Well, one of the things, there's overlap between what they're proposing and what John Stewart's doing. So I want to take the overlap out.
Yeah.
The rest of it, they're based on having two scenarios. Their whole approach to this is having two scenarios. So the council's going to have to decide what, what one of the scenarios is.
Who has to decide? We do.
That's us.
So I'll probably be back to you on the 18th or Tom will be back to you to talk about what that scenario is.
Again, it's just going to tell us things we already know, my humble opinion and I'd rather spend $46,000 on other parts of the city. I just feel like the SEQ is overstudied. And we're about to face some pretty tough budgetary discussions. If anything, this is saving $45,000, $46,000 for next year's budget. Because do we have this in the current year budget? I mean, where are these monies coming from?
They would have to come out of the contingency.
Coming out of the contingency fund.
For, from my perspective, this is what will allow us to make those decisions on whether or not we move forward with conservation in certain specific areas of the, of the city. Because if we have reports coming at us and we are just kind of, you know, feeling where the wind is, that's not, I think, an, a, a defensible way to, to go about bringing these reports together in some kind of synthesis that can stand up on its own.
I just sense from every member of this council, including myself, we want to conserve sensibly and smartly throughout the southeast quadrant. I just don't think we need this report to, don't think it's going to change any of our current trajectory. So that's where I'm still voting against it. I want to save $46,000 for the other priorities for the coming year.
Well, a lot of potash is outside of the southeast quadrant, so let's be mindful of that.
I, I don't totally disagree with you, Tom, except for this was indicated as an important part of the overall interim zoning work to begin with. It's been discussed for a long period of time and Alan feels it, I've got a lot of respect for the work that Alan's done and he feels it would be a good contributor to the end result. And we're putting a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of volunteer time into this whole project of interim zoning. If this will, if this will help the process and help us get to the best possible result and it's represented by, by a number of folks, then I'm okay to go along with it. I don't, I just do not spend the money either, but to, to do all this work and have the whole package leave one piece out doesn't make sense either.
Are there, Michael, you wanted to make a comment? I don't.
I had, yes, I did have a comment that, first of all, maybe to Tom. This isn't the value of, we have never done a natural capital evaluation anywhere in the city, so you can't say we've studied all this stuff before. Secondly, I, I'd like to endorse what Megan Emery said in that there are probably areas in the SEQ which don't have high natural capital value, but there are areas outside the SEQ. The Allenwood property, for example, or the Woods, East Woods, or UVM's land, which have huge capital value and they should be included. So restricting it just to the SEQ is not a smart way to go. We should define more, more, be more definitive about what we want to look at.
That is Alan's recommendation.
Comments or?
There's a second part that I wanted to make a comment on and that is on there, page two, table one. I think there are several possibly false assumptions that they've made about costs and benefits that business as usual, which means more development, more benefit of more impact fees and more tax revenues. It's been shown in many, many academic studies and practical ones that it isn't the case. And I think Megan quoted a number that for every dollar of tax revenue we get in on the grant list, we spend the $1.16. So, you know, that is a part to insolvency or, or massive tax rises. And the same is on the, on the open space conservation scenario we're using. The converse is the case. So there's a, Kimon is going to be doing the talking to these guys. So these are the things that maybe should be taken into account and pointed out to them.
He's a good negotiator.
You're going to ask for comments.
Paul and I will be on the phone with myself. This is what they do. They were highly recommended by Jessica Louisos. We've worked with them before, so I'm going to have to assume that they know.
I have no problem with them, absolutely not. I think that's a great outfit and they do good work.
Leo?
Thank you. My name is Leo Dato. I've been a citizen of this community for approximately 50 years and I have two questions for the council. One is, you've been talking about this group, I understand, for over a year. It's been brought up through some of your meetings, I believe. Why now, at the last hour, when you're getting ready to extend this interim zoning for another three months, is this group surfacing before you commit?
Leo, we haven't really, I think your question is if we had known about Earth Economics and had this proposal, we've just sort of sat on it for a year. And, and just the opposite, we, we have spent, and Kevin, I know, and Megan and I sat with Lyndon McGinnis and we brainstormed about what a proposal could look like to address these questions. We, Kevin spent a lot of time talking with a number of professors and researchers at UVM. We've been looking for a person or a company that had the expertise and ability to do this kind of analysis. And if, for whatever reason, it wasn't until very recently that Jessica Louisos, who's the chair of the Planning Commission, fought to recommend this company to Kevin. And that's, so it's been, I don't know when you started talking with him, but so it was just this past August with Earth Economics. We have talked about the need for this kind of study, you're right, for at least a year. It's been longer than a year, but most recently, it's been the last year in relative to our conversations about what our goals were for interim zoning.
Thank you.
Okay?
Second question is, I called the company directly, talked to a representative from this company who indicated probably the same thing, I believe, and mentioned probably to Kevin, that they're not going to finish this study until the end of February. If I'm correct, at the end of February, you're going to vote again on extending interim zoning. So if you don't have the results close that vote for interim zoning, chances are you're going to extend interim zoning again for another three months. I know a lot of people around me, I'd say the majority of the people in this room, probably favor that. But I, as a landowner and a few other people that I know, is we're being held hostage by your decision-making. Yes, open space is nice. Yes, wild animals running loose are nice. But very seldom have I heard anybody talk about the people that have lived in this community, paid their taxes yearly, every year, without any question, volunteered their time to this community on various committees, but yet they have to take a backseat to interim zoning. They in turn are being held hostage to interim zoning policy that you've set in place. So I like the openness of South Brown. I like the city, I love this state, I don't like it, I love it. And that's why I chose to stay here. But this process is making it very difficult for some people I know and including ourselves. If we try to sell, obviously, we have a major obstacle ahead of us. So with that in mind, I ask you, if you're going to approve this tonight, which is obviously going to be the case, please keep in mind that at the end of the three months, when you approve interim zoning and be extended, that if this study needs to be further studied, then still focus on interim zoning come to an end. Continue your study. Continue focusing on this community as a whole, as Megan has mentioned. Other part of our, our community has to be focused on, not just the southeast quadrant. So that's where I stand, folks. I hope that in three months from now, this interim zoning will come to an end. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you ready for the vote? We have a motion on the table.
Yes ma'am.
That was presented by Megan. Are you ready? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So the vote is four to one in approving this.
Kevin, would you like Alan to forward you parcels? Kind of where we're focusing our attention?
Yeah, that would probably be helpful.
Okay, let's move on to item number nine, which is our public hearing. So I guess we need a motion to, into a public hearing to consider extending interim zoning bylaws.
Oh, move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
The question is, how is this public hearing different from what's going to happen Friday at 8:00 AM?
That's on the LDRs for City Center.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot, okay. Thank you.
Form-based code. I know, there's a lot of.
I thought, for some reason, that was.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So comments from the council, and then we can hear.
First of all, do we, I moved that we extended IZ for three months.
Second. No, no, we didn't. We need to, yeah.
I just want to explain why I'm going to vote no again. So I'm against interim zoning. I voted against it the first time. I voted against proxy the second time. I just don't think it's necessary to make the changes that we're doing, and it creates a great deal of uncertainty for landowners, and I do think that we have some of the best planning in the state. So I just don't see IZ as necessary, and that's why I'm against continuing it. And also, that's my Uncle Leo, and I'm a landowner of South Burlington. Uncle Lou is a landowner of South Burlington. I've got a cousin that's a landowner of South Burlington, other family. I'm related to a lot of people around here. And I just, I understand the uncertainty that interim zoning does, and I personally believe that we've done a lot of great things to conserve spaces. I support conserving more spaces in sensible ways, but I also am a realist, and I think people need to live places, and so that's why I think our planning has been strong enough to allow for, in some cases, not all cases, the right amount of housing in South Burlington, and I think we could continue on that without this interim zoning. I don't want to take anything away from all the hard work that all of our volunteers have been doing. I think that is great work. That'll be factored into every decision going forward, LDRs, but I just don't think interim zoning is a necessary tool to do any of this. So I'm against this.
Are there any?
If we just take the vote, can we bypass the discussion? Is there any discussion here that's either for or against? Or if we're, if we're going to extend it, most people are here to, you know, to have us extended. I'd rather just go ahead and have the vote than the call. But if there's somebody here that's against it that wants to speak up, I mean, that's great, too. I just don't want to spend a half an hour talking about it if we're going to vote a favorite anyway.
I'd like to speak up for extending it six months, not three, because by the end of February, Earth Economics will may have finished its work. After that, the council and the Planning Commission has a huge job to develop the LDRs that might be a byproduct of all this work, and you can't do it by the 13th of February.
Well, we have the option in three months to, if we need one more month, to extend it one more month or three more months. That's the last bite of this apple. Three.
Three.
That's right.
I think it's three months.
Let's do that and see what happens. We can always do it again.
I'm okay with that.
Pardon me? Yeah, that was the original motion. Are there people that feel compelled to speak? Or would you like us to just vote, vote, get it done, so to speak?
I'd like to thank the council for its forward thinking on this issue and.
Way to have to vote.
And putting this on the agenda.
All right. So is the council ready to vote? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
You should close your hearing first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I moved to close the public hearing on extending IZ.
All in favor? Aye. The hearing is closed, and now we're ready for the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, passes four to one. Thank you. Okay, item 10. Update from the Affordable Housing Committee on the Status of Committee Initiatives. So we have John, and are you here solo?
Paul is going to look over to me.
Okay, great.
Okay, the subject is an update on inclusionary, I'm John Simpson, I'm chair of the Affordable Housing Committee, and the subject is an update on the, our work on inclusionary housing or inclusionary zoning in the transit overlay district. And we've had a couple of meetings with the Planning Commission. We've had, the last meeting, we had several developers there, and it was a good discussion about their attitude towards the inclusionary zoning requirements that we're making. I think there's general, I can't say enthusiasm, but I can say resignation to the notion that it's going to happen. And I think what we're, what we, however, have learned from their appearance is that, and our discussions with them, and we had a very good discussion for a couple hours this morning at our meeting with two developers who were in, one of them is in the room, Patrick O'Brien, right now. The other one was Evan Langfeldt from, from O'Brien Brothers. And I think what we, we've come to realize, I think we knew it all along, but they've certainly expressed it, that there is a cost to developers of having to provide, whether it's in rental fifteen percent or in ownership ten percent, of the units at a, at a lower price point than they would otherwise build and charge. And I think that it really, what it involves is there is, there would be then a subsidy of the affordable units by the developer and by the people who buy the market units, because obviously, costs are going to get passed through. And I've come to the conclusion, and I think our committee agrees with me, that, that perhaps if we feel that in our plan, comprehensive plan states it, and I think there's a pretty good consensus in this community, that we have a need for housing, that people who are employed by the city, employed by the school district, employed by our businesses in the community, that those people are having a hard time finding housing, and it is, is a public good for us to at least find a way to produce a few units as, as the city is built out in those areas where we're encouraging development, that is affordable to that, that segment of the market. And since that's a community good, then one way that we can look to have some participation by the whole city is to recommend that some of the permit fees, or all of them, and that remains to be determined, could be waived for those units in a development that are the affordable units. It's not a huge amount of money. Collectively, it is for the city, and it, and it would be an expenditure of, or a tax expenditure for the city to give up that money, but it's more in the neighborhood of, you know, $50,000 a year, $25,000 a year, depending on how many affordable units get built. And it, I think it's, it's, it's not terribly significant for the developer, but it's a very strong gesture by the community to do this. It would only be those units that are covered under interim zoning, or under inclusionary zoning. And so if somebody builds a hundred units, and fifteen of them in a hundred-unit apartment building, and fifteen of them are affordable, it would only be the fifteen that would have the fees waived. Now, from what Paul tells me, and he's prepared a very good spreadsheet that shows experience, recent experience with housing developments, that the planning and zoning fees, which cover preparing and filing the permits, and then getting the actual building permit, could be waived right away. That that could be done tonight, or it could be done after some thought. The impact fees are a little different, because each one, I guess, originally, the city council passed an ordinance in the case of each one. Recreation, police, highway, there's a sewer fee.
Right.
I mean, they're all individually considered, and you would have to go back and look at each one individually, and pass a, or amend the ordinance if you were going to waive those. And we certainly would encourage you to do that, but I'm not looking for, for a blanket decision tonight. What I'm really looking for is to bring this to you, and then either, you know, we segment the issue and deal with it consecutively, or refuse, you know, decide some are not appropriate, others are. But I think it would be a really fine gesture for the city to say, we're going to make this effort to underscore the need that we see for affordable housing and recognizing that we're really asking the private sector to build it for us. That's my speech.
Paul, do you want to comment?
No, I'm really here just as a resource. We've got, as John said, we've run some numbers on the various different fees. I guess I can, if you want, I can give sort of a general, across the board for multifamily, all fees included with the city, it's about $6,000 per new dwelling unit. About $2,000 of that is sewer connections, $1,300 of that is fire and electrical. Impact fees are about $2,500, and then the balance of about $800 is zoning fees, developer view of the zoning permit. It's a little bit higher for single-family homes and duplexes, but that's sort of the, the overall picture of it.
If we take out the impact fees, we just consider the permit fee, it would be just.
About $800 for a multifamily.
Oh, out of the $6,000, only $800 is the permit fee?
Yeah. And for single-family duplex, it's somewhere near, maybe $1,300?
How many inclusionary means are we having come online over the past few years, and do we anticipate moving forward per year?
In the future, it would be 10 to 15% of all development in the, outside of the, in, in the transit overlay district, so the area is currently excluded from interim zoning for any project, one and 12 dwelling units. So on average, we get about 140 homes a year, let's say 110 of those are in the applicable areas, so we're talking about 10 to 15 a year, probably. Maybe 20 in the upper end.
That's eight to $12,000.
That's, well, it depends if you, what, among the fees that you were to choose to waive.
Right, just the permit fee.
Just the permit fees, you're talking about $10,000 to $20,000.
In total.
And that's general fund, the impact fees, and this go towards those 200 funds, so it's really just within those. The sewer is a little more of a complicated situation. That one is specifically to the sewer fund for the plant.
And I think the fire and electrical has another issue, and a serious safety issue, and the proceeds go to the fire department, as I understand it. And so, you know, I think it, it will behoove us to look at each one individually. The one that could be done tonight is the planning and zoning fees, and then it would set a precedent.
It's $800 per unit, so it's about, with 10 units a year, we're talking about $8,000?
Yeah.
As a gesture, I mean, it's a modest gesture.
But I mean, we're hoping that we would have some fairly significant development, you know, in the next eighteen months, two, two years. And so it might be, might be $20,000 that would be involved.
Currently, the only applicable area is the form-based code, because that's the only place that requires there to be affordable units. The proposal that the Planning Commission was warned a public hearing on would extend that to the transit overlay district.
And whatever you do, if you're doing anything tonight, or between now and when you get the whole inclusionary zoning back to, to, that it's been through the hearings and it's in front of you, my recommendation would be that whatever you've decided to do at that point would be activated at that point. So you're not, if you would, if you approved it tonight, you'd be proving it in concept, it would be then applied, you know, at the same meeting when you approve inclusionary housing.
I'm in favor of waiving the permit fee. I think it takes many hands to make, you know, this light work as light as possible. There was an interesting article in BT Digger about property owners in Burlington, and you have different kinds of property owners that have had different effects on the costs of rental housing and, and pricing overall. And I, I think this is a way for us to tilt the scales to be more affordable. I am for that.
How does the council feel?
I'm not willing to pass anything tonight.
Well, I don't think we can. I think it would be.
I could give my feeling about it.
I would like to get a sense of the council, and then, you know, direct, I guess, Paul or Amanda or somebody to come back with a formal recommendation. And if, and in that process, they may also identify the process they would like to use for some of the fees as well, if, if we're interested in hearing more about.
Impact fees?
Yeah.
So we already contribute to the Affordable Housing Trust, right? Generally, that when it gets just given in a lump sum to a nonprofit which develops a block of affordable housing, right? And that, they've said before, that pretty much covers their fees. I don't know what, what range of fees that is, whether it's impact fees plus permit fees, or, but I think it covers most of their fees. It's like a sales tax discount, sort of, you know, for building the city. So this is another donation in kind, sort of, in the same effect, but it would be for inclusionary zoning only. So I just, I just want to word it so clearly that if a nonprofit built a 60-unit building, they couldn't take advantage of this, if they were receiving, you know, a donation from the Affordable Housing Trust.
Right. So as conceived up by John and the committee, let's say there was a 100-unit affordable housing, 10 of those would have been required to have been affordable, and therefore, 10 of those would be eligible. Even if they make 100 of them, even if they choose to make the other 90, 10 of them are the city's mandate. So that was, that was the idea, is those that the city mandates be affordable.
Just the units that are, that are affordable would contribute to that ratio of the permit discount rate.
Just the ones that the city mandates be affordable.
Right, right.
Because some may choose to do a lot more for a variety of reasons.
So I agree with that, yeah.
So are we amenable to have them come back with some real language?
Sure.
All right. There's some people in the audience who'd like to make comments, so, yes.
I just wanted to ask whether the council would like us to explore the subject of the impact fee ordinance as well.
Does permits at this point, permits for action on the 18th, our next meeting, possible action? At that point, we can discuss permit fees if you want, or not?
Permit fees, yes.
Not permit, I'm sorry, impact fees. Or do you want to just?
We can certainly discuss it, but permit fees, I think, is, it's low-hanging fruit that we should.
Okay. All right, well, let's wait on you doing a lot of work on impact fees until the council gets.
The, the planning fees are one thing, the, the fire and electrical are another.
Right.
Which of the fees are you considering here?
I don't think we're considering any at this point.
Just the permit.
As guidance, as guidance to us, what, what is it that you would like us to?
I think I'm suggesting that we're not giving you any guidance to do that.
Right.
Just the permit fees.
Just the permit fees.
And I think, I think Tim gave good contours.
So the planning and zoning fees.
Eight hundred and 6,000.
Yeah. Okay. We have some comments from the audience, so Monica and then Patrick.
Can I just connect some dots that connected for me, sitting through affordable housing meetings, being involved.
Will you tell the people that call who you are?
Sorry, Monica asked me. Thank you. What, to keep in mind, and where I think the timing of this is perfect, is that with inclusionary, we're required to give some form of offset to the developers. If they're going to build a perpetually affordable unit, we must give an offset of some kind. And right now, our LDRs only give density. Now, we're in interim zoning because people are concerned about density, and we hear from developers that density isn't always the answer for them. So the concept of looking beyond just these permit fees, I think, is very important, because that could be the, the coming together of all of this. Developers are saying, we don't always want the density, and the community is saying, we don't want the density, and these fees will help show that it is the community behind increasing the affordable housing without having an impact on density. So that was, those were dots that were connected for me in listening to what the developers and the community had to say.
All right, Patrick?
Oh, yeah, thank you, Patrick O'Brien.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Patrick O'Brien, a lifelong resident. And I would just like to, first of all, seek clarification. Um, in regards to Paul's question about what you would like the committee to work on, I'm still confused if you're saying they should only work on permit application fees or if they should also work on impact fees. Me personally, I think that would be, it would be a wiser choice to look at all of them. I mean, there's only, there's not that many, is there, impact fees? And then there's the application fees. And like what Monica said, I think, uh, she said it well. And I can tell you now that an 800 dollar savings is, is not going to help. I mean, it'll help, obviously, but it would, it would help a lot more if it was double or triple that.
Well, I, I was narrowing it down for action in two weeks. I don't know if Paul has the time to really go through, or our lawyers, all of the, I mean, and this is just me saying, I'm, you know, weigh in.
Well, I think we have to have that conversation.
It's a start. It's a proposal. We're taking action on the proposal or asking for some more information and a proposal to come back.
So, do you want some more information?
No, I'm saying if we start with permit fees, we could, you know, we could look at it again later and see if it's had any effect at all. Maybe then start extending to impact fees later if we wanted. We don't have to do it all at once. I mean, impact fees are there for a reason because the new construction has an impact on sewer, on services, on a lot of things, right? And those are really important to the functioning of the city. So, I mean, permit fees, I can see that, that's, you know, like you said, it's low-hanging fruit.
Can I follow?
Sure.
Just don't forget, though, that as interim, as inclusionary is being discussed, the offset has to be there from the beginning.
Yeah.
So, if the offset isn't a waiving of fees, which is beneficial to develop, developers, beneficial to the community, then density is going to be the default because there has to be an offset. So, I understand it takes a lot of time to go through it, but I would recommend that you, uh, look at it more-
Yeah. So, do we want the planning commission to look at the-
Right, right now, they're doing interim zoning. So, what I would like us to do is to see the permit fee language because I think it's something we could quickly do. And I'd like us to have a more fleshed-out discussion, just the counselors, on what we see with regard to the impact fees versus other, I don't know what Monica called it. She had a term for it, um, kind of the-
The offset?
The offset, thank you, the offset.
Now, this, can I make a, the offset, the reason she says it's offset is mandatory is because in the state legislation that set up the ability of us to have inclusionary, area housing or zoning, it does require that there be an, an offset. And the most obvious offset is-
And in the past, it's always been density.
Is the density that, but, you know, parking waivers, uh, then permit waivers, those are all things that are, you know, in the toolbox that could be at. My recommendation is that-
What, you're done with parking?
Well, that's residential, that doesn't count.
My recommendation would be that, we're, first of all, we're set to have a hearing with the planning commission on the 10th of December on inclusionary housing. They will, assume they, they like it and it gets adopted by the planning commission. It will come to you the next week, two weeks, whatever, whenever you can get it on your schedule. So, at the earliest, we're looking at, you know, mid-December to have inclusionary housing adopted. I think by, and I, and I think, so, if we're going to do the permit fees and make them effective, then you would want to have that on your agenda the same night that you would be considering inclusionary housing. As far as the impact fees, I think we can, I would suggest that, and they have to be really looked at individually. And, for example, right now, you waive, I think you, or you give a reduced impact fee for, uh, senior citizen housing.
Uh, there is, yes, it's-
Because that's an option, not just to waive them fully, but to have-
It's an option, but it, but in other words-
Fifty percent cut or something.
You know, already, there is a sense of evaluating each of these individually. And so, I, what I would suggest, and we can work on this, and, you know, it doesn't have to be done by the 18th of December or whatever. It can be done in the future, but that we keep working on this and see where we can go with it. Because I think, you know, Patrick is right. Uh, it, it, and, and I'm really looking on this as, as a positive gesture. It's not going to be a dealmaker for, for any developer, but it's a positive gesture. The city says, "We want affordable housing and we have a mechanism and a requirement that it occur, and we're willing to give a little."
Yes, you'd like to make a comment?
Uh, I was in the meeting this morning. Patrick was there and Steve O'Brien.
Done.
Can you identify yourself for the record?
Yeah, we didn't discuss this directly, but I-
No, your name.
Paula DeMichael. Uh, I have a suggestion. Um, someone said in a previous meeting that Burlington gives, forgives partial fees. And whenever you go to talking about impact fees or doing any research on it, I think that it would be helpful if somebody found out how it works in Burlington. I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel if there's already a model out there that we can, um, adopt or, or at least consider. So, that's just a suggestion when you get to impact fees.
Okay. Monica?
Sorry, last comment. Just, uh, the other thing I learned is that, um, first of all, I am not representing the planning commission in what I share. I'm just sharing what I've learned individually. And part of that also is that the, what the planning commission would be looking at does not include any kind of fee language. The LDRs, I believe, wouldn't get into that. So, what the planning commission would be looking at can continue moving forward. Um, and then this piece of it would be separate from that document, so it doesn't slow down the process, which is great.
Yeah.
And Patrick?
Oh, yes, a couple other points. Um, the first one is just kind of a, a heads-up or an notification that, uh, and I think it was kind of an unintended consequence, but we're, we're certainly dealing with it now with the committee. And that is, uh, the, the interim bylaw ordinance does affect, uh, affordable units outside of the transit overlay district, specifically those ones who have, uh, are dealing with density bonuses. Um, and so, if you, and I just want you to know that, so when it does come back to you and you see that it affects things in the southeast quadrant, you're, you ought to know about it. Uh, but the second part of that is that I, I don't understand if, in fact, the council takes us up and comes up with a waiver system, why all affordable units, all affordable, uh, units that are proposed in the city wouldn't be able to seek, uh, this relief? Why would it just be for inclusionary?
Well, that's probably something we could discuss.
Yeah, but I think that Tim's point with regard to the, um, funds that we've created is that-
Trust.
Right. The trust fund that we've created is that it is, uh, so far, it has been used for nonprofits that have been using it basically to pay the fees that, right, we're waiving. So, your question is, could it be on top of waiving those fees? Is that-
No, my, my question is simply that, I think what we're talking about, I heard somebody say, is that these fees, we should consider waiving these permit application fees for inclusionary units.
Yeah.
But we have other types of affordable units in the city that are not under the same definition as inclusion. So, my ask is that why wouldn't we look and try to give a relief to all of these affordable units?
Where are they?
Well, for example, one is like South Village. We, um, we have the ability to take advantage of a density bonus. And if we do that, we can provide 30 to 35 units of affordable housing under the definition. So, they're not inclusionary units, but they still have to meet the definition of being perpetually affordable. So, why wouldn't I be able to come seek relief for my application? It's no different.
It's not mandated, in that case.
It is mandated because I chose, because I get a density bonus.
Well, but you're right, Tom. They're not, they're not mandated by, they're, it's an option. So, the inclusion, the inclusionary is man, would be mandatory. A bonus is not a requirement, so.
Okay. Well, Paul, can you come back at some point in the future with some additional information that we can consider about?
Absolutely.
We definitely want to encourage affordable housing, so this'll do it.
All right, well, I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to, uh, broach this subject directly with you. And, uh, you know, I think it's going to end up in a positive way.
Well, good, thank you. And, and thank you, Patrick. I mean, I, you made a little bit more about affordable housing in a different way. So, that's helpful because we do want to encourage it. And it doesn't always have to be the nonprofit sector bubbling together.
I mean, you could go so far as saying that only the for-profit folks could obtain the waiver.
I think that's something that Tim was kind of outlining, if I understood correctly.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, update on the city-school collaboration. So, Tom, do you want to do the $2 million question first?
Sure, so, um, on the warrant tonight was a transfer of money from the city to the school for $2 million. So, the way that the tax payments work is that as we collect taxes, the three times a year, we, as quickly as possible, I think the charter says we have up to 20 days from the date that we collect taxes to transfer the money to the school. And we, we've always, as soon as we can, it's on your warrant, maybe even the next day after we, uh, collect the taxes. Occasionally, the school gets into, uh, a situation like they have here where they have about 13 days that they can't make AP or payroll payments. And they need to ha, get a bridge, a bridge loan for $2 million. In the past, they've gone out to a, a lending institution. They paid origination fees. They paid a higher interest rate. And what I'm proposing is that if we have the money, and I've checked with our auditor, if we have the money in our account and the school reimburses us for what the interest is we would have gotten on that money, we're actually saving the taxpayer money-
Let's do it.
-by providing this money to the school district. So, it's kind of, it's a unique situation. We've talked to the auditor, he's okay. Andrew, our city attorney, is going to draw up a memorandum of understanding so that we have a record of all the signatures.
Can we just give him this much less with the big check that comes?
Well, they, they would pay us back once, once we do the, the, the transfer of the tax money-
We just transfer less?
Plus the interest.
We would just transfer less?
Either, either way, but yes.
And are they amenable?
They are. Yeah, they're excited about it. It saves the school district money.
Nice. How often does this happen?
Uh, I would say probably two out of the three tax transfers a year, they have to do a bridge loan.
So, it would be a, this would be a paradigm shift if we keep, keep doing this if, if we have the cash. They would, they would want to do this again.
I think so.
Do we always have this cash on hand or is this a unique year because of the projects?
We typically do. I mean, for that amount of, it's, it's not their whole transfer. I mean, their transfer is maybe $14 million, so this is 2 million of it. They, they need 13 days early.
13 days early, okay, just 13 days.
That's fine.
And what interest rate are we going to charge them?
The exact one that we're getting now.
22%.
Come on.
What's that?
22%.
That's not how banking works. Come on.
It's a win-win.
Nonprofit banking.
Nonprofit banking. Well, we're good at that.
So, I just want, I just wanted to explain it so you understood what, uh, what it was. It's unique and it's a way to help our partner across the street. And we don't lose anything.
That's all good.
That's super. So, we need to-
It could impact the bridge at Kimble F.
This is a different kind of bridge.
Okay.
Um, so, we need a motion to approve that, um, dispersment of $2 million.
Make that motion.
Second.
Okay, is there further discussion? Uh, we, we're going to get a thank-you note, right?
Who's the school board's best friend now?
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Um, do we have any other update on school collaboration? I mean, we had our, um-
Your meeting, your meeting was-
We had our steering committee meeting last week, um, to go over the, the school budget, uh, the school proposal. And, um, what else is going on? Maro Naid is, is working with them, with our legislators. Some of the issues are joint issues and some are, you know, specific to the school issues. And so, I mean, I, I think things, we haven't gotten any complaints about parents driving into, um, Markat that I'm aware of. So, I think that all is, is pretty good.
Yep, and we're-
Is the road laid into Markat?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
It hasn't really started yet, but they will this week.
New road, the temporary road?
Yeah.
The fencing's up, some of the staging is up.
Well, temporary in that it won't have all of the, um, mechanism and stuff, but it's where it's going to be, right?
We're hoping it's paving.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, it's not like we're just doing this so they can get into their school while we build. It, this is going to be the road.
Oh, yeah.
It won't be finished with all the sidewalks and stuff. So, it's not really temporary.
Yeah.
It's the road in. Although, it'll have a temporary thing to get to the, um, parking lot because we're not doing the parking lots yet. Because all the stormwater stuff has to go in.
That'll be next summer.
But, but where you see it, where you're going to be driving, Tom, is where the road's going.
Did they have any water in the parking garage of the, uh, Allard Square building over the Halloween night? Does anybody know?
They're pumping going 24 hours a day.
They do.
I believe it.
There's the water.
Well, I would think so. It's like a slanted, shoot.
A lot of water came down, that's for sure.
Okay. All right, um, item 12. Consider and possibly approve a proposed prohibition of parking on a portion of Brookwood Drive and Sherry Road. So, Paul, you're going to take us through this?
Sure, uh, Paul Conner, Director of Planning and Zoning. Um, Brookwood Drive, just up the street here, um, off Dorset Street, for a number of years has had, has been an, an area with tight parking. Um, there's, uh, looking back even at the Google Street View from 2011, um, and even frankly, some council discussions before that time, there's been challenges of parking on both sides of the street. Uh, that, uh, situation was temporarily replaced by a construction zone. Um, and then this year, there's been a new multi-use building that's gone up on, uh, Dorset Street and Brookwood Drive. We're not building a new building immediately across the street but it's all down the same property area. They have 29 on, off-site, off-street parking, uh, spaces. But there has been, uh, regular, uh, on-street parking taking place on both sides of the street.
So, they have 29 onsite, you said?
They have 29 onsite, 18 on the side where the, where the medical office is and 11 where a, the former medical office was, it was reconverted to a single-family home. Um, we witnessed on multiple occasions parking taking place on both sides of the street, which is currently, uh, is being seen and not allowed. But probably, uh, we would recommend that there be some modifications there. Um, the street at 30, 31 feet width is, that's the width that you would want to do to have two drive lanes and one side of parking and to assure fire access in both directions. Um, so, we're proposing that parking be prohibited on the south side of the street. Um, and in addition, you'll see Sherry, uh, road right around the corner is much narrower where it's just 20 feet. Historically, it hasn't, we haven't seen a lot of incidents, uh, parking on the street. It's just sometimes somebody's guest. If it's one car, there's two wheels on the grass, two wheels. It's not a big deal, it happens occasionally, but we would not want to see the side effect of prohibiting parking on Brookwood being that every day cars are parked sort of half-on and half-off the street. So, that's why we're recommending there be a prohibition on both sides of Sherry for the first 100, 150 yards or so, um, which would, um, likely lead to folks not parking there. Um, in part, uh, the, uh, we've received some feedback after the new medical office and apartments went in, some concerns about folks' driveways being blocked. Uh, in addition to this proposal that you would undertake, uh, potentially for, uh, eliminating parking on the south side of the street, Public Works is prepared to go and, uh, paint the hash marks to create official parking spaces on the north side. As we described in our memo, while that's a small gesture to put paint, it really does lead to much more rule-following, because if there's three parking spaces painted, and there's, that leaves room for three cars. There isn't a fourth one that tries to-
Squeeze in.
Squeeze in, and then it hangs over somebody's driveway, and then they can't get out to work and all those kinds of things. So, it's a low-cost way of achieving a lot of compliance, frankly. Last thing that I'll say is that a couple of months ago, you adopted some changes to the parking ordinance that will allow you in the future, including with this, if you so choose, to adopt changes to parking by resolution rather than going through the whole ordinance. That allows the city to be a lot more nimble to look at situations as they evolve, as this one has evolved a little bit, as we will probably come back to in a couple months with some other ones, where we can be a little more, we can be seeing how things are changing, how patterns are changing in the streets, and update, for example, we've got another street that we'll be coming back to shortly, where there is currently no parking allowed because of the historic use of tractor-trailers coming on and off property over on San Remo Drive. The use that had the tractor-trailers is now gone, so the need, we can return some additional on-street parking, because the people who have blocks off of the, the truck, they're not there. So, we'll come back to that one, but just to, as a for instance about how this can be used.
Great.
So, that's what I wanted to share with you. Tonight, we're looking for, I think, guidance from the council, but not the formal action. Is that correct, Kevin? Because we don't have the resolution in front of you, but this is the guidance.
Okay, comments from, I mean, I think it sounds like very reasonable.
Yeah, it makes very good sense. Is there any reason why employees of the businesses can't park in the shared parking that's behind, like, the Sears Auto Center? There's a ton of parking over there.
And to be honest, this afternoon, there were 15 spots open behind that, in that parking lot, in the off-street parking. There were two, there were two cars parked there, and a lot for 18 cars, one being handicapped.
So, Kevin and I had a conversation, and understanding that this business is, it's growing, and they may yet be figuring out what their demands are, I presume that they want to make sure that they've got enough space for their visitors to make use of, but we're happy to place a call to them and encourage them that if there's really 15 spaces being unused all the time, that they can maybe rethink about, rethink about that, and we can be in regular touch with them.
There's a comment.
To your question about Sears Auto, under, there is no prohibition about that being the case now, as long as the U-Mall agrees with it, it's private land, but that could certainly be done, and that's one of the tools now available to property owners is to trade parking spaces without having access.
I did inquire with Hannaford once. I was, because I park, and then I walk to the library, and then I come back and go shopping for food, and I saw, you know, a car being towed. I'm like, ooh, what was that about? So, I went and talked to the customer service, and Hannaford, would you ever tow a car, you know, if I was parked here and using the library, for instance? She said, oh, no, we never do. And there's no sign saying no parking, only for, you know, customers, or, and she confirmed it, so I really- Staples has that sign. Right. They don't like people to use that as a parking drive. And I think, right, and I think Barnes &amp; Noble does too, right? There are certain businesses, but not at U-Mall. We have a comment in the back? Yes?
Henry Barton, I live on the corner of Brookwood and Sherry Road.
Uh-huh.
And Paul mentioned they've been looking back as far as 2011. Our problem has become since Mitchell Swartz has opened up a dermatologist on both sides of the road. With this proposal coming right now, I wouldn't be able to park anywhere near my house unless I was in the driveway or on the grass, because I can't park on Sherry Road, and I would be fighting Mitchell's workers for those spots on Brookwood. Now, you went by today, you said you saw two cars.
In the parking lot.
In Mitchell's-
Lot.
Lot.
There are many more cars on the road.
There are many more cars on the road, and my car's in the shop, and my wife's was in the driveway. Kenny was at work, Kenny DiTillio, so that was all their cars.
Right, I saw an employee walking to a car, too, yeah. I assume-
So, the thing is, guys, is he built the building, and he can't, he doesn't have enough room for his workers, and it's spread onto the street. And I showed you some pictures where these young ladies, she left me like this much to get in my driveway one time. I left one there. But then you got a car across the street, you got two right there, it's very difficult. We never had a problem. And it'd be one thing if we could approach Mitchell. He hangs up on us. He doesn't give one rat's you-know-what about us. And we never had a problem until he got there. And you say there's 11 spots across the street?
In the small house, they're saying there's 11. You're telling us there's 11 spots, I'm sorry, I'm Sherry Morton Barton, wife. We live directly behind Mitchell's other building. There are 11 spots. Six of those spots are reserved for his tenants on the other side, and however many guests. That parking area is empty. There's always at least two to three spots that are empty in there. And I will tell you right now, think about looking out your dining room window. Think about 10 to 12 cars, 12 hours a day, Monday through Friday, and you're probably saying, Mrs. Barton, you're not really home. Those are working hours. The DiTillios, one family member is home. We are home on Mondays. I work a flex schedule, I'm home in the afternoon. We have lots of neighbors here, we have retired people, and you're now going to take away five spots on top of, Henry and I can't even park in front of our home. That's what you're taking away. You're taking away five spots. Where do you think those five cars are going to go? They're not, they're not resident cars. They're Mitchell Swartz's employees' cars. So, guess where they're going? They're going down by their house. They're going down by her house. They're going down by her house.
Which is just down Brookwood further.
They're just going to go inside your house, too. We have a lot of neighbors here who are affected by this. It's going down the road. It took me an eight-point turn to get out of my driveway today. Eight, an eight-point turn to back out of my driveway. Come on, guys. A couple of weeks ago, he had some kind of soiree there. Oh, my God.
His open house.
You couldn't? I am, I wish that there was an emergency. I'm thankful that there wasn't. We called the police, okay? We watched the police officer go down through the neighborhood. We're talking into the street at the stop sign, both sides of Sherry, both sides of Brookwood, up to Dorset, up to Dorset Street, to the crosswalk, and the police car goes by. Great. I call dispatch. Okay, what's the plan? What's the plan? We just saw the cop car go by, an hour ago. What's the plan? Oh, I don't know. I'll tell her to call you. No phone call. No returned phone calls from the city, Kevin, until at 4:40, and then you are gone for a week. No responses to emails. Two years, folks. This, we've been fighting this for two years. Come on. I'm just, a simple question. Where are those five cars going? Do you have a suggestion, Paul? Can you tell me where those cars will be parked?
Or why can't they park in their own lot? Why can't they, I mean-
We approached the employees, and you know what they said? He told us we're not allowed to park in the parking lot. Wow, news.
I mean, some of the street signs aren't up from the construction, we had to live through that, and honestly, next time you go up through that way, come up Brookwood, and when you edge out into Dorset, tell me if you don't block that crosswalk, looking to see if the traffic's clear coming down Dorset. There's a lot of mistakes that were made.
I don't understand that last point. You don't block the crosswalk to-
When you come up, you're coming up Brookwood.
Because I was there, and I did drive there, and I went down Brookwood, and I went back to Dorset.
Yeah, now, you can't look for oncoming traffic, because the building's right there, unless you block the crosswalk.
Right, you inch forward carefully, right. I mean, well, I understand you're upset.
That's not what it's there for. Inch, inch, add some snow, add a, somebody riding their bike, huh? It's traffic bad enough, I mean, we go down to the light anyways, down by the hotel, because it's suicide trying to take a left there.
Right, right.
And then Christmas is coming crazy, so, but, I mean, these variations, inch, inch forward, no matter what, you're wrong doing it.
No, no, that's being a defensive driver. That's not wrong. I understand you're upset, but I think that inching forward is a reasonable thing to do.
Okay, I'll use that next time.
So, I have a question before, because I, I mean, I think this makes sense to have parking on one side, except I was-
For who?
Will you let me finish? I think I'm agreeing with you, so let me finish. But I did look on Sherry Road, and I thought, well, where are all those people who live there? Where are they going to park? So, is it possible to have just one side of Sherry Road, no parking?
So, certainly, yes, you can, you could say one, or zero, or both. The reason that we were recommending Sherry Road be added is that Mr. Barton is correct that there will be a displacement of some cars. They will go somewhere. Maybe they will go and they will park on the property, maybe they will go further down Brookwood where there is a curb. They might go onto Sherry where there's not a curb, and that would lead to likely tires being in the front yards, and we didn't want that to be a side effect. The nice thing about the way that you now have your ordinance is that if you choose, you could choose to do this incrementally by the parking, the traffic ordinance, it's by resolution of the council. So, if you wanted to try just the three spots on Brookwood, and the city going and striping the other side to make sure that the issue of having no space to get into the driveway is reduced, then you could do that, and you could see what is the side effect of that happening. Certainly, as we said earlier, we're happy to contact the property owner, have a conversation with them about their, their use of-
By resolution, do we have the ability to say residential parking only?
Yes.
We don't currently have a system to manage that in South Brooklyn.
We'd be happy to be the guinea pig for that.
So, Elizabeth out by the airport, I thought that was residential-only parking.
No, it's no parking.
Okay, but they have similar problems. It's no parking in the road.
It's no parking, yeah.
Okay. We did it for similar reasons, right?
What do we do on East Avenue?
East Terrace. It's no parking.
Oh, it's no parking.
During business hours.
During the day. During, during UVM class sessions.
But we've had this elsewhere. We have no parking during business hours.
During the day.
For residential reasons, for quality-of-life reasons. So, I support exploring that or extending what we've done elsewhere in the city.
Well, but then, what was, what were you going to say, Paul? We don't have-
Well, just, we do not have a residence-only structure, because that, that then, the challenge with that is that, that, there's an entire structure associated with doing that, of identifying whose vehicles are or not a sticker system, a permit system, a guest system. There's an entire enforcement structure associated with it.
But East Terrace is just no parking on the street during business hours.
Correct.
So, that would work.
But what's really important is getting the rectangle stretched down, so that the cars can't get near driveways. I mean, that's paramount, I think, so that people don't have problems getting out of there. There's no eight-point turns.
And we would also advocate that for the fire safety, that really ought to be parking only on one side of that street. There's streets all over the city where we don't prohibit it on both sides, but there's only one car, another car. It's not, it's not a daily occurrence, and a fire truck can get around. I think that the photographs that you've all seen, the evidence we've seen, is that it's a pretty frequent occurrence. We don't want a fire truck to not be able to get through.
Well, I'm not, yeah.
That segment for safety reasons, we strongly encourage.
I'm not positive we can get it perfect the first time. I mean, I think there is a little bit of guinea pig niche with this decision, but I would like to suggest that you just have no parking on one side of Sherry Road. Well, I don't know if that will solve it. I mean, I just, I feel for people if they live there, and I want to come and come over for a cup of coffee, and where the hell, heck, do I park?
At Hannaford's, and then we'll walk over?
I mean, I can do that, I'm a walker, but most people don't do that. If they're going to have dinner at someone's house, they don't park half a mile away at night to walk over. I just, I feel very badly that this business owner is, you know, really not responding very well. I have a business next to my house, and cars parked out in front, and, but I get along very well with my neighbor. It's a home-based business, and they're very respectful. I mean, sometimes, you know, there are cars in front of my, my house, but I guess I feel okay, because it's the road. It's not my house. And I think that we all, you know, have our comfort levels, but I think we do have to work with you, but at the same time, understand that the road is a public right-of-way, and so we have to find a solution. But I think, you know, it's complicated, because the business owner is, I think, being not very thoughtful in his interactions with the residents, and that's unfortunate. So, we have a couple other people who would like to, man, gentleman, wait a minute.
I'm Jamie Clutchell, so I'd like to, oh, sir.
That's okay.
Hi, I'm Joe Raym, I'm a resident on Brookwood Drive.
Uh-huh.
I think some of the bigger issues are, you know, trying to turn, come off of Dorset Street on to Brookwood when there's literally cars, and you can't get two through. But I think the bigger issue is that, and I appreciate Paul trying to make the road safer, but, you know, we're a residential community, and basically, because of this, if we have the two lots that are commercial or mixed-use on Dorset Street that have spilled over and become a commercial parking lot on Brookwood Drive, where it's always been a residential link, and I think that's the bigger issue, and that impacts us, and that's not going away. And I think that's where we're seeing, you know, this frustration and stuff, because we can't, you know, we can't get into our neighborhood safely, you know, it's always a challenge. You know, I feel bad for my neighbors that live closer to Dorset Street, because they're basically living in a commercial parking lot.
Are you opposed, though? You don't like the idea of identifying places where people can park? Because that-
But we still have a residential area. If that's a short-term solution to get us to residence-only parking, I think that's fantastic, and it makes it safer. I think the bigger problem is, it's not like we're a community that you develop from the beginning as a mixed-use area, we're a residential community that you're pushing commercial into our neighborhood. You know, we talk about South Brooklyn can have too many parking spots. The answer is to push the parking spots in the residential neighborhoods. I don't think that that's a good idea. I think we're missing, we're missing out, we're doing it wrongly.
But almost all the houses, for almost as long as I can remember, along Dorset Street in front of your neighborhood have been commercial. I mean, granted, they've been a lawyer, I mean, how many cars do they have?
But they have commercial lots, and if the lots are designed for that-
Right.
We're not talking, we're not talking about those, we're talking about the ones on Brookwood that are parked along the road.
But commercially, I guess my point is, commercially is there. You are on the cusp of a commercial area, whether you like that or not. I mean, those all, used to be all single-family homes.
And that's fine, ma'am, but if, and if the cars are parked there for the commercial uses, they don't, they don't fit in the lots that they designed for them.
The lot is empty. That's what was stunning to me, is that the lot was empty.
I'll submit to that, but it's, the bigger issue is, you know, we're becoming a commercial parking lot in a residential neighborhood.
Right.
Because you trip at the density on one lot.
That's true. The gentleman who started earlier, and then Mr. DeTillio.
So, my name's Jamie Clutchell, I also live on Brookwood Drive, and I agree, I think the concern with, with doing the one side, like they talked about, doing the one side, no parking, and then designating spots on the other side, is you're just going to extend the employee cars all the way down, you know, past my house to my neighbor's house, and so now, if we have, like somebody was mentioning, if we want to have guests over, or if we, you know, we need somebody to come work on our home, you know, bring in a contractor or something like that, there's, there's now no parking on the street for them, because they can't park on the other side, and I've got cars, you know, now in marked parking spots all along our street. So, it's just, you know, and again, I don't know, I don't know what the solution is, unfortunately. So it's just, you know, and again, I don't know, I don't know what the solution is unfortunately, I don't like current problems, I don't have solutions or recommended solutions to, but, you know, if you've got empty parking spots in a lot and a business owner who won't allow his employees to park there, I don't know what the solution is to that. But giving them designated parking spots in front of all of our homes doesn't seem like the solution to me.
Would you send a letter to Dr. Schwartz and say, you know, we'd really, we're having issues with your neighbors, they've been complaining, we're trying to find a solution, would you be willing to work with Sears or, you know, Hanafords or something to find parking spaces for your employees?
Right.
And so your lot is for your patients.
If I could kick you back on that, ma'am, you mentioned that we're on the cusp of, of commercial properties, there are all kinds of commercial properties on either side of his properties, Hanaford's on one side, but all the lawyers and stuff that you're talking about on the other side that have commercial parking lots that would hold ten, twelve cars that have one, two, three at the most at any given time.
There we go.
Just on the opposite side of his property, on the south side of Brookwood Drive, there's a lawyer and...
An insurance company.
Yeah, I mean, literally, big parking lot, two cars, you know, is there some way, again, we can send a letter, we can, we can make a recommendation, we can ask him to pursue these things so that he's not mandating his employees parking.
And they would actually be walking closer than they are now.
Sure, yeah.
But I think he's hopped to Moorewood and Lea area here already.
Well, maybe we could send a letter to all of them and see if you guys work with that.
Let's find a solution, yes.
We certainly could try to work something out, I mean, we can't make him be a nice neighbor if he's just never watched...
Well, you know, in a situation like this time of year, you know, the yard, the streets need to be cleaned and the street sweeper comes by, I got a black walnut tree that just litters the street, I'm there every day, that's my own fault, it's my own tree, but if the street, sweeper came down to clean the street that I'm paying for already, you could just go right by. And there's no cars.
Hey, was there another, Barb? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. DeTillio, excuse me.
Thank you, Ken DeTillio, lifelong resident of South Burlington, Leo, I've got sixty-some odd years on you, so. I wanna thank Councilman Chittin for your initiative on bringing this forward. For my wife and I, the primary property owners adjacent to this business, we have seen the transition of residential neighborhood turn in from residential to commercial, i.e. the businesses that we're referring to now, transition from a small business to a very large business. And we're not here tonight to try to get Mr. Schwartz to be a nice tenant in the neighborhood. We want what, we want, what we once had, a nice private neighborhood, been there a long time, it's a residential neighborhood. You as a city, I say you, I say the city council, the planning commission, the zoning board, all of you have played a role in allowing this to happen. You have allowed in a complete intrusion into a residential neighborhood for the sake of a business who doesn't care about those people who live on the periphery of their business, and I'm not gonna stand here and go over some of those tonight, it's immaterial. We find that, my wife and I have taken the brunt of this, although our neighbors, and when I talk about our neighbors, we, our, some of our neighbors, we've got 200 years of residency on Brookwood Drive, very proud of that, four neighbors, 200 years of residency. We never complained when you tore about, tore apart the fields that were behind our house and built the university mall, we never complained when you built the now-existing Hanaford, nor did we complain when you built the Sears Automotive. But now that the city, you, have allowed this intrusion into our neighborhood, it's time for us to stand up and say enough is enough. This man is ordering his employees to park in our neighborhood and have taken away our rights to have our streets plowed adequately, our streets swept, fire and rescue to respond to emergencies that happen in our neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera. And I think we need to take a step forward and ask ourselves, who's in charge here? We're in charge, you're in charge of making these decisions. It's not us, up to us to ask if he would be nice enough to ask his people to go park someplace else so we can have our nice quiet neighborhood back again. It's up to you as a council to tell them, you built the parking lot, park your cars in your own parking lot, period. I'm Italian, so I often use my hand to speak a lot and I get a little animated, but this is a very, very emotional thing for us. This project next to us has been an absolute nightmare and it's been a nightmare to our neighborhood. Our neighborhood has been taken away from us and we're here requesting your attention to detail to this, to make this right and bring Brookwood, Oakwood, and Sherry Road back to the development that it once was. Let those people park in the building that they park at, that they owned, and order Mitchell Schwartz to keep his company vehicles, his employees, out of our neighborhood. Nowhere else in this city, and I worked for the highway department, I worked for the fire department, I retired very proudly eight years ago, and I know what traffic issues are like, and nowhere else in the city have we seen a situation like this that has affected us so personally and has created a hardship. So, I hope that we are experiencing, I'm getting notes of the tail is wagging the dog here, and I hope that the city stands up, listens to the residents of this very once peaceful residential community, and please restore it back to what, what it once was. Thank God for this blessed city center, but we should not allow intrusion into residential neighborhoods and rob us of our basic rights of being able to park in front, in our own community, 'cause that right has been taken away from us. Thank you for this opportunity to speak our piece, I appreciate it.
Thank you, I think it's important for you to share these concerns and I think it's on our agenda, it clearly is of importance, we had a plan drawn up that still doesn't meet all your needs, but I, I don't think it's falling on deaf ears, and we will work very hard to see if we can return your neighborhood to at least roads and streets that are for your use and your guests' use and not for commercial. I can't promise it'll happen overnight, I do think that we need to work with the businesses and see if we can find a common ground with them to recognize your individual rights and needs and how their business needs to fit in with, you know, the culture of the city, so I appreciate that, we'll keep working. Yes?
If you guys could just take a minute to look back probably two, maybe three years ago, this is not new, you will see there's, we have been speaking up about this from when Mitchell first opened, I think it's 325, the same pattern, so if you could just do yourself a favor and go back and look at those records and those complaints, you'll really get a bigger picture and maybe, you know, see really where we're coming from. Thanks.
Okay, I have to say, I've never heard this complaint before, but, and I've been on the council for seven years, but it's maybe gone somewhere else and hasn't gotten here. Is there someone else who wanted to, yes, Barb?
Yeah, just a quick, I can't be nearly as passionate and articulate as the man who lives in the neighborhood, but I spoke a while back when I disagreed with the vote that you took about taking away all the parking regulations. We now have an example of what may happen in the future, so I would encourage you...
That was with the parking regulations.
What's that?
That was with the parking regulations.
That was permitted with the existing, I know.
But if you think about what's happened now that there are none, my concern is that we will see a growth of this kind of problem, so maybe it's a time to sort of look to the future and think about developing some guidance about residential parking for the future, so I would encourage you to do that.
Agreed.
Oh, I was gonna say that, first of all, this is Jim, Mr. DeTillio, right?
Yes.
That was very well expressed, I agree with you 100%, somehow there's gonna have to be a solution to this. I too was not aware of the issue, and when that building was going up, I don't know when that was. You know, I'd drive by and I'd think, where the hell am I doing all the parking? So, but I never gave it, I never gave it more than a, literally a passing thought 'cause I don't drive through there very often, but, but somehow there's gonna have to be a solution and I think it's gonna have to be incumbent on the, on the business owner to work with the city to, to find that solution, perhaps other business owners as well, as well, and the guy may have to realize it's gonna cost him a few bucks if he has to rent some space, parking spaces from the other, from the other businesses, I mean, that's maybe a fact of life, so, so be it, but you absolutely have a right to have your, to have your, your, your street back to, to a neighborly street and somehow it's gonna have to get figured out, so thank you for being very clear about that. You're welcome. Thank you.
So, yeah, pardon me?
Why don't we just put up no parking signs during business hours?
Yes.
Just do that now.
Yes, I'm, I'm for that.
The neighbors don't want it.
So, well, I'm just saying...
I'm just, I'm just proposing it, I'm just saying something.
And I'm just thinking, I mean, I pathetically like that idea until, you know, my in-laws come to visit from San Diego and don't have any place to park when they come to visit our house, so, just it's not, I wish it was that cut and dry.
Parking Mr. Mitchell's lot.
Is there anything that says I can't?
I don't know.
Just asking a question.
See his property, yeah?
That's probably...
So, am I of the understanding that the neighborhood does not want no parking on one side of the street?
Right.
Correct.
So, you, you, you would prefer at this juncture to continue to have parking on both sides of the street? This is the proposal, it's before the council right now, is to restrict parking to one side of the street and, and only allow it on the other side, so that's not something you want.
So it's just gonna stay the way it is right now?
You want, you wanna keep it the way it is?
I wanna be able to park in front of my house.
I understand that, we're trying to, we're trying to be, we're trying to understand what it is that the group wants, this is kind of a difficult situation, there are so many of you.
Would, would it be fair to say that, that as an interim solution from a safety perspective, we like the idea of people only parking on one side of the street so that we can get through, we're not worried about head-on collisions?
Right.
But as a long-term solution, we don't think this meets what we're looking for. Is that accurate?
Yeah, but we don't wanna see another two, three years until, until what? We gotta start this, reset this complaint of two and a half, three years complaining until we get here?
Well, I think what we would propose is this trying out the one side of the street, marking some places so at least driveways aren't impacted, and then work with Dr. Schwartz or, I don't know, is he a doctor? I'm assuming he is, I think he's a dermatologist, right? Dr. Schwartz and, and, you know, maybe the lawyer, Norwood and the insurance company to see if there's some way that they can assist Mitchell with, or Dr. Schwartz finding parking spaces for his employees, and then hopefully the 12 spots would solve the problem for most times. I mean, there probably are gonna be times when the place is packed, I don't know.
Honestly, if, I mean, just for myself, if the employees were parking in the parking lot and every once in a while some of his clients had to park in the street for half an hour, an hour, nobody's gonna wake up about that.
Well, that's what's gonna happen.
Yeah, we're, that's...
That's what's gonna happen, he doesn't have enough spot for customers and employees.
Well, we can work with him on that, I think, we need to get some information.
But that's what's gonna happen, I don't have a crystal ball, but that's what's gonna happen.
Well, and then maybe we have to go back to the drawing board, but, I mean, we can only, I think you can only find a solution if you try some things and see if they work, and if they don't work, then you try something else. I'm, I'm not smart enough to figure this out tonight.
The three, the three spots that you're saying on Brookwood side would be right in front of DeTillio's house?
We could shift it to the other side, we could have no parking on the north side and have parking on the south side.
It doesn't matter whether you can't park there because there's no parking side or you can't park there because there's cars in front of your house.
I understand, so...
I get, but what I would ask long-term is can we look at the possibility of creating resident-only parking areas within the city of South Burlington?
If, if, if I could speak, Burlington does have that going on and what, they have signs that say resident parking only, and what the residents do is if they have company, they have a placard, they give their company to put in their car window so they know that that car is legitimately there.
I mean, and I know...
Right, and they have a process and they have stickers and they know whose cars and with their license plates belong in each house, so it's, it's a little different than just sticking a sign up and voila, it'll happen, so I think that's the concern, if we're gonna put something in place, we want it to be effective for everyone. You know, I lived in Burlington and my husband was on the city council when they did that stuff, and some of the residents weren't all that happy 'cause they didn't get enough guest passes, you know, I mean, they had their daughters living with them now, so they have three cars and they only have two passes, so it isn't perfect.
And, and I would say that South Burlington and Burlington are two very different animals, so obviously things that work there might not work here and things that they can do we might not be able to do, but I think there are also benefits to what South Burlington has versus what Burlington has, and at least in a neighborhood like Brookwood, if, if we put up residential parking signs or resident-only parking signs, I know who my neighbors are, I know who my guests are, I know if the car parked in front of my house is, you know, at Ian's house across the street, or if it's my in-laws, or if it's somebody who's working down the street and has been parking there every day for the last, you know, three months. So, I feel like there, you know, in South Burlington, where we're a small town and not, not, you know, us, we, we don't have a downtown, if you will, you know, it would be much easier for us to self-police.
We're getting a downtown.
And, and maybe then we won't be able to, but for right now, you can very easily self-police and say, hey, this car's been parking in front of my house every day for the last three weeks, can somebody come do something about that? As opposed to needing, needing a bigger police force to drive around and check for placards and stickers and whatever.
And, and I, I appreciate that, but from a police perspective, people either have the right to be there or not to be there, and so there would need to be some kind of mechanism in place where a vehicle is allowed to be there or not. In the short term, if you would like for Public Works to go out and straighten some parking spaces, that has to happen in the next couple of years.
Yes, so do we want the north side or the south side?
We would strongly recommend that it be the north side. Public Works checked in with their plow crews about what makes for safer nighttime plowing, that was their recommendation from the people who do the plowing, to have the south side because of the angles of the blades and everything, to have that be the no parking side.
Okay. What about Sherry Street, one side or both sides?
You could start with neither for now, if you want, I'm not, I'm not trying to restrict, we're just trying to look at side effects, but again, you can always add it later.
Well, I mean, I guess I would look to the, those of you who live on Sherry Street, do you wanna try one side parking?
On Sherry Road? And what do we call when they're, when they're parked on our lawn, should we call you, Helen? And have you come down? Because right now, we're not allowed to speak to any of Mitchell's employees or we will be arrested, so whatever you'd like to do, I'm happy, if you wanna let them park in front of my house, go ahead, but if they're on my lawn, I will be calling all of you to come and, and ask you then, what shall I do now? They're on the lawn.
I guess let's go with what they proposed then.
Right, but again, it has to be all or nothing.
No parking on the other side.
So it's either everyone can park on Sherry Road or nobody can.
I like the one side of Sherry Road and it still gives options for the residents, just to try through the winter as we look for some residential-only parking options or possibly some time limited, but...
But the winter, when roads are smaller, I don't know if that's the time to do an experiment.
Well, better than what we have now, where it's both sides, we today decided...
Right, right now you can't park, right now it's common sense that you don't park on either side of Sherry Road, the road's very, very small, you went up there today, it's not like Brookwood.
Nobody parks there.
No one parks there.
No parking on Sherry Road.
Nobody parks there.
Well, then leave it alone. So we'd only have no parking on, um, Brookwood.
But they're gonna come from the office. Where they can't park on Brookwood, they're gonna park there.
Well, I mean, the other, I would go with what Paul has proposed as a first step. I really-
Yeah, resident parking. That's all, that's all I want.
Then we need to continue this conversation.
Yeah. Well, I think we need to continue to explore resident parking. What we're looking for is, um, easing some of this, we hope, in the interim, understanding that it is a pain in the neck if you live on Cherry Road and you can't park in front of your, your own home.
Keep in mind, Helen, our, we're on the corner. So by moving, no, no parking on Brookwood and no parking on Cherry is our complete border of our home. There's no, we cannot-
And how about just during the workday? No parking just during the workday, Paul?
On Cherry?
Except it should just, yeah.
We have an East Terrace.
On Cherry, yeah.
You can't park on Cherry to be safe.
No parking on Cherry.
Students generally have parking on it. Um, because the pavement is only 20 feet wide, so by definition, it'll always be two wheels.
Well, then, let's make it no parking.
I like that. That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, there we go.
I guess I would say, at a minimum, if you wanted to do the minimal thing for just safety, we would say Cherry to Dorset on the south side, no parking. That's three parking spaces. That makes sure that the fire trunk needs to get through, there isn't a backup on Dorset Street. That should be action immediately. The rest of it, you could choose to do, or you could choose to see what happens. We are gonna be communicating with property owners, but we suggest at least that for safety and striping the north side.
So, so, again, no parking on the south side of Brookwood, striping-
From, from, at a minimum, if you wanna do the most minimal thing that we'd be comfortable with from a fire safety, would be no parking between Brookwood and Dorset on the south side.
Cherry and Dorset.
I'm sorry.
Cherry and Dorset on, on Brookwood.
That way, if a fire truck is making a turn, if somebody happens, we do a three-point turn, then we get stopped.
And, and do some spots on the north side.
Spots on the north side, no parking on Cherry?
And then you choose to do whatever you wanna do with the rest of it.
I say no parking, look how narrow it is, just no parking on Cherry.
Now, I've been parking there, Tim, for 20 years.
What is the-
You're saying I can't?
On Cherry Street?
No, on Brookwood. The three spots you're taking out of Brookwood on the south side?
No, the north side. Oh, the south side, yeah.
This is frustrating enough. The three spots you're taking from the south side of Brookwood. Two are on one side of my driveway, one is on the other side. I've been parking there for 20 years since I moved here. And now you're saying I can't park there?
Well, then, compromise is to put no parking from the end of your property to Dorset.
But then he can't park there.
But you're, you're, you're on the corner of Cherry and Brookwood?
Correct.
Right, so the end of your property, then, is the next dermatology building property, right?
Correct.
But they have, they have an opening to their back driveway, so does-
Functionally, that's already the case, though, because we say no parking here at the corner after that property. So, that's fine.
Is that true right now?
Yeah.
But they still park there.
But they, oh.
There's a sign here that says no parking from here to driveway.
Oh, okay, yeah, so, so you need something to say, no parking in that area.
There, there should be. If there, the signs are not up there, we'll make sure they're backed up.
But what, you know, has Chief Francis gone and taken a look, or somebody from the department and verified? What the minimum is that they need to be able to turn on the street and have no cars in the way.
Well, so there's, there's the minimum to drive down the street and the minimum to be laid out. Probably, um, Mr. DiTillio can answer this better than I can. They can get through a single driveline. If they need to set up, they need 20 feet to it.
They purchased that truck since I retired, so I don't know what the parameters they're gonna need. But, um, basically, I, I guess what, from our perspective, what we're asking for is, let's restore everything back to where it was as, as best we can. If, if the employees are told to park in their own parking lot-
Problem solved.
Problem is solved. We can tolerate a customer who goes in for 15 minutes, makes a purchase or has a procedure and then leaves. There is a lot more fluidity in our street and we can tolerate that. We're willing to work with people. But unfortunately, we're neighbors with a person who is very uncooperative and unapproachable and orders his employees to park in the street. And they've robbed us of our identity, again, without being redundant. We would like the simplest solution to this, one side of the street, parking isn't gonna solve it. Painting lines in the streets is not gonna, it's gonna just encourage those spots to be filled constantly. It doesn't solve our problem.
What do you think, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, what do you think could be the quickest short-term solution while time is taken to figure out the long-term solution? Because we can't sit here tonight until tomorrow-
Resident parking only.
To what?
Resident parking only.
But the short term.
Have that right now.
The short term.
That's what I, that's what I'm saying. That's gonna, that can't be done instantly.
Order Schwartz to stop, tell his employees they cannot park on the street and that, this whole problem goes away.
We can't do that, man.
We don't, we don't have the authority to order them to do-
But, hang on, here's another thing. I know we're go, I know we're going long into the night, but Schwartz is, is shifty. He has six apartments on top of that new building. And I'm not sure how many he has in the other little building. So what he'll do is he'll have his people park, the residents, park in the street to create room for his workers.
But the residents of Dorset.
You can't park over there in the winter.
Understanding the winter. Winter's not the issue.
Well, it will soon.
Well, it will be.
Right now, I think.
Would no parking during, during the day be, you know, the one side of the street that we're making no parking, or sorry, the one side of the street that, that will have parking, uh, with making that, no parking during the day? I don't, I mean, I don't know. I'm just, I'm-
You're not saying anything?
I'm trying to help us solve our problem.
I like what Paul's suggesting for tonight, and then we need to have another conversation about this with longer-term solutions, so that needs to happen.
What we got in our packets?
Helen?
Leo?
Just wanna mention that as a police officer for 40 years, and I've worked with Dave Propper, the village manager, uh, we had a problem in the neighborhood because of the high school kids parking in the, in the citizen lots of our roadway like yours. So they went to resident parking only on the jury, jury drive area. I would recommend maybe study that. Get with somebody that can look at that, see how successful it has been through the years. And maybe, that might be a resolution for the folks here. But just a thought to pass on.
I agree.
Also checking the police department for us, but it was relatively easy enforcement. We just called the owner of the registered vehicle and made him aware, resident parking only. And the neighbors, like you mentioned earlier, they self-policed themselves. When they saw somebody parking, didn't belong there, they would approach them and nicely ask them, please don't park here.
We just can't do that overnight or tonight. It takes time.
That's why, and that's a probably just a follow-up in that area.
Could you just hear just from one more neighbor? Because I am so thankful that they showed everybody a show tonight.
I'm Joanne Ryan, also on Brookwood Drive. Um, so, number one, we have a responsibility to ensure safety, which we currently don't have with cars on both sides of the, of the street. So what can we do tonight to ensure that we have safety tomorrow or as soon as possible for that? That's our responsibility. Number two, the problem is this currently, this business infringing on the neighborhood. What do we have to fix that? And what is our timeline? What's the accountability? I don't like this, um, I, you know, should we put a small focus group together with a 90-day cycle? You know, what's, can we have just some sort of sense of a timeline that we're working with to solve the long-term problem? But what can we do immediately for safety? And, and what's gonna make folks happy in the interim until we can have a long-term solution? Is it one side of the street parking temporarily? And what does temporary mean? Um, you know, we have an Airbnb house next to our house now. Um, they routinely have large groups of people that come in and they routinely park in front of our fire hydrant and mailboxes. We approached the owner, takes care of the problem just like that, no issues. Whenever, whenever there's an issue, I just have to text him. It was in Tennessee, it's taken care of. Mitchell Schwartz does not seem to be that person. So, if we can just have some semblance of a timeframe for a permanent resolution and, can we have more residents who live in the neighborhood working as part of that solution? Doesn't sound like there's been a lot of contribution yet into that. There are great ideas that are being tossed around, it's just that there are impacts to those decisions.
Well, what's the pleasure? Do you, I mean, I think we could, we can try the plan that's on the paper. We can continue and we will. Another piece of that will be to contact Dr. Schwartz and, um, apply whatever pressure we can. I mean, we certainly can't tell him what he can do, but we can certainly, um, offer some reasonable suggestions. And, you know, I guess ultimately, you can start issuing tickets or something to his employees or, you know, I mean, at some point, I guess you can get mean, um, but-
I'll go take a chair. At this time-
At this time, we can't do that.
Everyone has the equal right to parking. So it's just to be clear about what we can and cannot.
If he doesn't work with us, we're gonna start looking at residential parking.
But in terms of today, we can't say you can and cannot.
Right, yes, no, no, I understand that. So, so I think it's an iterative process that, um, I, I know you're impatient with us, but I think there's some limitations to what we can do with the speed in which, um, we can do them. To get to residential parking only is gonna take a little bit of work. Dave, then we'll wrap this up, maybe?
As an idea for the staff to think about, maybe to get residential quickly, if they could explore the idea of printing up cards that said, you know, make it next meeting residential only or whatever. You print up cards, has a person's name and address on it. You give them to the people. That'll at least start the residential thing.
Dave, we need to pass an ordinance to do this. We're talking about a couple of months here.
You, oh, okay, I'm sorry. I missed that.
You can't just print out cards and say, you can't do this.
So, I think that's-
You can't make it a vol, uh, you can't-
We have, we have to go through an ordinance process to do this. And, and you're talking a couple of months to do that.
Yeah.
It has to be a law.
So, we're talking about what can we do tomorrow to make the situation better as we look for the longer-term?
Do you folks have a consensus on what we should do for tomorrow?
Are we just saying go with what Paul says and in the meantime, you start this-
That's correct.
That, that's it?
I think, uh, neighbors, we happy with that?
Yeah, I think, I think the one last piece that she had asked was a timeframe. And if you're saying a few months is a reasonable timeframe to look into-
New ordinance? Where's Amanda?
She was here.
New ordinance, a couple of months? We have to have public hearings. We have to notice in the paper. There's a process we have to follow under state law.
Yeah, and I think that was just the last question was, was what is that timeframe that we're looking at? So, you know, three to, three to five months or whatever?
If the council chooses to go that direction, we need to start in a planning commission?
No.
Okay, so that saves us six weeks.
And who would our point of contact at the city be while this process is going on? So that we don't-
You can call, you can call me, the city manager, 846-4107.
But at the moment, you got, you, you folks have agreed to go with what Paul has. Then let's, let's do that and-
When is the violation if we park in front of our house? What is it, a ticket, $5 ticket or something and nothing happens? I'm just asking.
We don't have a process really for ticketing anyone, so, I mean, I think you could probably park it.
We do, but-
Well-
Well, the only process I know is when we hit the winter, what's, when's the winter parking start? I thought it was this week.
December 1st.
December 1st, so three weeks?
Then you can't park on the street.
Yeah, that's totally fine. But I, I don't wanna pull up in front of my house to get a cup of coffee and I've got a, someone towed my car. That's, that's not okay.
Not likely to be towed on the-
The likelihood of being towed is pretty slim.
I, I just would like to request that we don't paint parking slots in front of our house because that just encourages the people to come down.
Trying to keep people out of parking in front of your drive, right.
I, I understand that.
I mean, you could have one or the other.
Well, just one side of the street would be fine with me as a safety issue.
Yeah.
This is a same job you have here.
I agree.
And then I do, would really appreciate if you could contact the business owner with a very, um, with a letter. And I, and I could express our appreciation for that because we haven't been able to get anywhere with him. And maybe coming from you, um, he's telling his workers to park. I mean, I don't even know if he says park on our street, they're just parking on our street.
Find some parking somewhere.
They, they could actually park at the mall, I mean, without any problem.
That's right.
Well, with the mall's proof.
With their permission, well, they, you know, the mall isn't gonna shut either.
But just, just to be clear, that every property land-
We can't advise you to go park on a private property.
The church is off for parking.
Right.
If it happens, we can't, we can't advise people to park on a private property.
Right, that, that's why we're suggesting that there's several business owners.
There's businesses.
Dr. Schwartz is the first one to start talking to, and then you expand to some other options and those business people. And hopefully, they can, um, arrive at some, some agreement, whether he pays the money or whatever for some spot, I don't know.
So, as a short-term action, we'll bring back to you, uh, the resolution for no parking, um, which would be for the, in, in the areas shown here.
Yes.
Um, south side of Brookwood and Cherry. Um, and then we proceed to examine what you talked about this evening.
Right, and no parking.
What you wanna do about painting or not?[1544.61]
No, no painting.
No painting, I see.
They don't want it, and so...
We won't do it.
So we won't do it.
Well, for those people who, just understand, those people live on the north side where the parking is going to still be allowed for the time being, you still risk having people parking...
Too close to your parking.
Encroaching on your driveway. Without the stripes, they will encroach on your driveway. With the stripes, we think that they won't.
We, we have been tolerating that for five years, so I, I think for a few more months we can put up with it.
Fair enough.
It makes it feel permanent.
Yeah, I think that's true.
Do we have to vote on this?
No, we can't, we, it isn't warranted to vote on this. This was the discussion. We got some great feedback from the community. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
That was really good.
And we will anticipate voting this and, at the next meeting, and we commit, maybe by then, in two weeks' time, you will have written a letter to Dr. Mitchell or go see him and see if we can make some progress and report back on the 18th.
And the process has started for the resident parking.
Well, our thought process has. Our thought process, we don't, I mean, it takes a while. Part of the process is to write it up so it can become a law. It's not just the back of a envelope with, you know, this is what we sort of want.
Many deals were struck like that.
Pardon me?
Many deals were struck like that.
Well, deals may have been struck like that, but typically laws are not written that way.
It's ordinance, it's going to be...
We'll be coming back.
So, we will try to adhere to...
Appreciate your time.
What the law requires.
Thanks all.
Thank you.
All right. And we'll see you again soon. All right, let's, it's nine thirty, let's take a quick little break for...
Snickers, Snickers, right?
Oh, could you cut it right?
Oh.
Oh.
Oh, cookies, throw a whole pack.
Next one.
They don't hear them, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're going to have to take them out.
Yeah.
It's not a bad thing.
Yeah.
It's not a bad thing.
Oh.
Good.
Well, cookies, throw a whole pack.
Oh.
Next one.
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 You sent them late?
Yeah.
I was waiting for them.
Yeah.
I have a question.
He's got me.
I don't think he's...
He's got me.
But it's still...
He's got me.
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 He's not coming in tomorrow.
He's not coming in.
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 Yeah, it's going to be...
I don't know what you're going to do with streets.
I'm very impressed.
The work group looks like they really made some...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's, that's...
Yeah.
Plus, if it comes tomorrow, man.
I'm trying to think of it.
It's not, I mean, it's, it's, looking at this piece, it's such a special place, you know?
As long as...
It's close to the action.
Do that. As long as we don't...
Get rid of it.
Resources Committee, if it comes out of this, because he does live over kind of towards that area, I think he's allowed to express his opinions.
I absolutely agree with that.
I, I, I know.
But the point is, I'm saying is, Dave, I don't know, something, something is not there.
I'm like, I'm...
It's a, 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 it's
It's intended to boost AT&amp;T's coverage from a capacity standpoint in this area. And we have been deploying a number of these in South Burlington, in Burlington, and in Essex. Have worked on those projects. So with that said, I think to kind of use our time efficiently, I really want to open it up to questions.
First off, the distance from the ground to the light fixture is?
Seventeen feet.
Seventeen feet? Do you know what the distance is on all the other light poles in the development?
I do not know.
You do not know. Can I ask Paul a question?
Sure.
Paul, in that development, is there a height restriction on those types of light fixtures to fourteen feet or fourteen to sixteen?
I can look it up quickly. I don't know off the top of my head.
Because this may not conform to that PUD, right?
Actually, when we were designing the light fixture, we got the light standards from the landlord that were used on the other light fixtures so that those could be incorporated into the drawings.
But at the right height?
Now, the height, we have to verify that. It's the light standards that were to match.
But I think that's important to understand if the height matches the other ones, right?
Yeah, just to be clear, we're talking about the height of the light fixture.
Yeah.
Which, yeah, I understand that AT&amp;T is flexible and will accommodate whatever design standards.
Is this a 5G installation?
I'm sorry.
Is this a 5G installation?
This is intended to support what currently is operating, which is the AT&amp;T LTE, which is a 4G standard. The evolution to 5G is capable with this equipment, but it is certainly not something that at the moment is being deployed in this area.
We reached an agreement with AT&amp;T a couple of years ago to rent some light poles on Dorset Street near the store for 5G, probably for demo purposes and stuff like that. They haven't been installed yet that I can tell, but the design is very similar to what I see here. So I'm assuming that this is 4G, 5G, yeah, type technology.
It's the same technology being deployed here as what is deployed on those Dorset Street poles.
And so you've proposed to locate it now how far from the corner of the building?
It's being moved approximately 100 feet south-southwest from where it was originally proposed at the corner of the building, in that green grassy area.
Uh huh, I see that. And you realize what our concern was with where you had it located before, right at the corner of the building?
Well, I understand what the landlord's concerns were, that there were some underground utilities there, so we were trying to avoid the underground utilities.
You know, there's a lot of information, disinformation out there about EMF and effects on humans and stuff like that, but in my mind, and that's why I asked this, the pulled out of the last meeting, right, and treated it as a separate entity, was that in its first proposed location, I thought it really was untenable to have that transmitter literally at probably the height of the person living in that corner apartment with the height of that building and the height of that pole. So that's why I raised the objection, right? It just didn't seem like that's a good place to put either 4G or 5G cell antenna right out somebody's apartment building, right? So my question is, can you get it further away from the living spaces even more? Is that possible on this property anywhere that would facilitate your connection to the network? Or is this the only location you think that is viable?
Well, certainly working with our landlord, this is the location that was agreed upon, and he, you know, must have, I think, in probably reaction to some of your concerns, came back to us with the revised location. That isn't something that was brought to my attention and nor do I think it was brought to yours. It really was at the initiative of the property owner. I can say that we will include with our petition to the PUC, and I'm happy actually to provide it even in advance to the council, a radio frequency admissions report. We always include them with our petitions. It demonstrates the threshold of compliance with the FCC standard for safe admissions. This site is a fraction of a percent, of 100% of the standard, and so it's extremely safe. And the legal landscape is pretty clear that once we as an applicant demonstrate compliance with that FCC standard, then, you know, radio frequency admissions cannot be a criteria that, you know, can be used by state or local government agencies in regulating the deployment of the wireless facility.
Would you want to live in that apartment and have the can right over your head?
I have been citing these, I've been working on these applications for wireless since 1992. I have cited many of them on residential areas. I would be happy to.
You'd be happy to live right in that apartment, right?
Yeah. I would not be concerned about the safety of it.
But the fact that the landlord volunteered to move it, like, you know, almost 100 feet or so, I mean, I would really be happy if they could move it even further away if possible. If they can find, if it's 150, 200, there's got to be a site on that property that facilitates that structure. I'm glad that they've already...
Keep in mind, it's not just what would work for that reason, right? It has to also achieve the radio frequency coverage capacity requirements. And so I think there's a number of criteria that have to go into determining the location of a facility.
What's the connection of FirstNet? I didn't understand that.
So AT&amp;T won the bid to deploy a nationwide broadband network designed to support public safety. This really was a result of the 9/11 tragedy. It became very clear...
I didn't understand what function this served for our public safety post here in South Burlington.
So this site will carry the frequencies that support the FirstNet network. And so the improvements in capacity and coverage derived from this site will be available to FirstNet users, and so that's...
And with FirstNet users? Not sure. I'm not sure if we are. But it would be available?
Yes. And key to that, you know, is the availability, the functionality for public safety users and priority access in the event of an emergency.
And this is especially important as a small cell because it achieves a capacity objective, which means that during high traffic or emergency-type situations, there's the added benefit of having this extra network available.
Amanda, and I'm sorry, I don't recall your name.
Elizabeth Kohler.
Elizabeth, yeah, she told us our limitations with regard to, I don't know the word for it, but in terms of making an appeal, some kind of appeal with regard to radio waves. Is there anything that the city has at its disposal with regard to considering the location of such a tower?
So in the memo that I provided dated November 4th, 2019, the criteria that the Public Utility Commission, I'm Amanda Lafferty, I'm the Deputy City Attorney, these are the, just generally, I didn't include every citation and every sub-criteria, but this is generally the criteria that the Public Utility Commission considers in whether to grant a certificate of public good for telecommunications facilities. And so there are limitations. That was one of the, I'd say, main purposes of the Telecommunications Act that was adopted in 1996 was to maintain either local or state review processes of telecommunications facilities, but to impose limitations on that. For instance, municipalities and the state can't discriminate among providers and cannot prohibit such structures within the boundaries of the jurisdiction of the city or the state and cannot consider the health impacts. Basically, the Congress decided at some point that as long as it was below certain levels, that that was safe. And so unless, now, and let me take a step back, and this application hasn't been submitted yet, and so once it's actually submitted, any municipality that is going to host a telecommunications facility is a party that can participate before the Public Utility Commission. And so they have to take the city's comments into account, but that would not necessarily result in a denial of a certificate of public good.
What I see is aesthetics, historic sites, air and water purity, the natural environment, and the public health and safety, and the public's use and enjoyment of the I-89 and I-91 scenic corridors or of any highway that has been designated as a scenic road or a scenic byway, with due consideration having been given to the relevant criteria, et cetera, et cetera. That, so if there was, for instance, a concern that this was kind of, you know, something that was negatively affecting the view of the mountains, that could be something that this council could submit.
That is, yes, that's certainly a comment that would be relevant under the criteria. Yes.
Are there other questions?
I appreciate that they offered to move it 100 feet.
Pardon me?
I appreciate the fact that they offered to move it 100 feet.
Yes, I was glad to see that as well.
The plan that you sent originally, the key, the graphic scale, I think, was incorrect. I see it's corrected on this one, but I was looking at the original plan, and so I was 900 feet away according to the graphic scale, but it's actually 100 feet away, so I'm glad to see that that is corrected.
Well, we will use the most recent plans when we do move forward and file the petition.
That was 900 feet away, so, okay.
Are there any other questions or concerns?
Just checking.
Pardon?
The height of the light.
Oh, okay.
And the half.
The other question is, I mean, do you need to put a light fixture on it at all?
Well, there's no technical reason from AT&amp;T's perspective to put the light on it. I think the landlord was looking for...
To make it look like another light post.
Right.
Like a tree, branches on it.
Don't think that would work in the setting.
Our scenic byway of I-89.
Maybe a church steeple would be perfect right here.
Okay. If there's no other questions, we don't vote on this, do we?
No.
No.
Okay. So you're satisfied?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate you coming in. Thank you.
Long way.
It's always fun, you know.
Always funny, yeah, right. Okay, item 14, the Winuski Valley Park District Annual Report and Request for Funding.
Yes, next.
We will be swift.
Here's the PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you.
They perform.
Thank you.
Quickly, we will have to suffer a little bit. Question was slides.
Thanks.
And if you don't want these on the thousand...
Let's see.
Hey. She's yawning already.
I'm sorry.
It's so rude. My mother would be...
So I've been before, most of you before, so this is, I won't have to start from scratch on who we are, the introduction, but just so you know, it's still Winuski Valley Park District with seven member towns. We're managing around 753 acres now. We bought new park last year.
I can't hear, I'm sorry.
Can you please take your conversation outside? Karen, Karen, can you take your conversation outside, please?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I thought it was me wasn't talking loud enough, so, okay. And we, our most recent acquisition was a park at the mouth of the Winuski River called Doorway Cove, and we're actually going out to bid to take the buildings down using FEMA money, and we're going to be renaturalizing that site. So that's a very exciting development. For us, in South Burlington, we manage several properties, as you know, and we also have developed a great relationship with the city as a contractor and have been doing significant work on your parks. We built a couple of bridges at Wheeler Park this past year. Also, the year before that, we did, we've also done a bunch of stuff at Red Rocks, putting up signage, working with YCC Crew. And as a result of that, it's created a new market for us, and we are incrementally increasing our contracting with other communities as well. So we've done some work for the town of Williston and for the city of Winuski, and also for the Winuski Natural Resources Conservation District. And so that's a piece that we're going to be increasing incrementally over time, and for the first time in our proposed budget for FY '21, we're putting it in as an operational line item source of revenue, which is a fancy way of saying that we have enough confidence in it that we are going to have it be part of our operational structure going forward. It's a really strong market and need for regional towns to have work done on their trail systems, and it's gone well for us. So I want to thank you guys because you guys helped to structure that initial contract, which still works really great. We use that same model with the other towns. And being under the same insurance umbrella really helps as well because we don't, it just makes for a very simple model. And also, I guess importantly is, you know, we were able to keep our, you know, budgetary growth year-on-year a 6.5% increase, but we're only asking, we're asking the towns for a 2.6 increase overall. And we're quite happy with that, given the increased cost for maintaining our staff, but also with the growth of our park system and our responsibilities and catching up with our deferred maintenance and so on and so forth. And we have several properties that were currently in negotiation, different states in negotiation on for acquisition, which is very exciting. I think probably that the most publicly talked about is that property in Williston, the Jacob Parcel, which I believe we were talking about last year, and this year it's feeling a lot more like it's going to become a reality. So that's a 29-acre parcel in Williston, which will allow us to own land in that town, which is something that has been a goal of ours. Similarly, with the town of, city of Winuski, they're going through a park planning process, but we're hopeful that in the springtime we'll be continuing discussions with them about Memorial Park, which is a park down on the shore, on the shores of the Winuski River. So we are increasing our holdings. I think my board and my great board member right here is very focused on the fact that given the challenges of climate change and water quality right now, that our role is really kind of morphed and that we are really focused very much on wetlands and floodplains and areas that can, that are logical for us to manage or within our wheelhouse, but also can benefit water quality and assist with the overall effort to deal with climate change. An interesting thing you'll see evolve, as you know, the Ethan Allen Homestead Museum is a tenant of ours. We own that park, but they, but they're an independent nonprofit, and they have expanded their mission to include a much more wide-ranging cultural acknowledgement of Native American life, and it's really changed the museum, and I think you're going to see a lot of things evolve there. There's a couple of large-scale donors who have expressed an interest in helping to renovate that building, so that's something that is mutually beneficial to us and the museum, so we're really excited about that, and that's rapidly evolving. And in terms of the parks within your borders, basically all, with the exception of Winuski Gorge, which would pretty much did standard maintenance with this year, we had, you know, tree planting at Muddy Brook Wetland Reserve, Muddy Brook Park, we did some upgrades. It's, you know, as is typical every year, every year there's flooding and there's use and we need to restore these parks, but it's been, overall, it's been a really strong year for your system. Are there any questions at this point?
Can you clear some of the trees of the gorge so we can see the view?
Which ones?
Well, there's a couple of overlooks, but they're, the trees have all grown up and you have to like, the aperture's like this, you know, it's really hard to see.
I will talk to our park manager about that.
You know, if you've got a scenic overlook, right? You've got to be able to see the view, right? You know?
I'm sorry, but what was in my mind is the collapse of the hillside or riverside, I don't know if you read about that, but we have a series of easements for Riverwalk, which is between Sammon Hole and Interveil Road in Burlington.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And Riverside Avenue was sliding, there was a big mudslide there.
Oh, really?
Last Friday, yeah.
From the rain?
From the rain, it completely obscured the train. The only reason I looked at you is like, I don't want to start cutting down trees on hillsides.
Right, no, 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 no.
Because that whole hillside has been, you know, over time has been...
It's over the gorge.
Yeah, 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 but I'm sorry, I just had that on my mind today because I was, you know, we had to close down the trail today and we're working with a city engineer on next steps with that. So I just wanted to thank South Burlington for your support and for, you know, continuing, and hopefully we can continue the contracting with you guys as well because that's been a really great opportunity for us, and I think it's a real growth area for us.
I think it's great. Do you, you have this as a PowerPoint?
Yes.
Is there any way I could get that?
Yep.
If you don't mind, I'd like to use it as a case study in school.
Sure.
I teach a course called Introduction to Sustainable Recreation and Tourism, and this would make a...
You could teach us a thing or two, right?
I doubt it. But...
You can come and talk to your class, David, if you ask them.
Well, I know, they'd get in trouble, you know, that way. No, I'd love to get a copy of it, so I'll...
Sure, yep.
Please, thanks.
Happy to.
What do we have to do here? What's our...
No, this is just informational.
To check in.
The funding request in the upcoming budget is $59,086.
And all we have to do is...
And we work for you guys, so...
Provide the money.
We're here with our annual report.
Very sustainable, very frugal. You guys do a lot with the little we do.
Yes. I think you do great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you very much, and I'll save you some paper if you want.
Yes.
Or should we give it to David for his class?
Do you need it back?
No, I'll keep this one and get a...
I wrote on it, though, just so you know.
Just use my South Burlington email, you want my university email? I don't even bring my wallet.
Send it to me.
Give me something.
It's the only PowerPoint out there. It's got all your other documents.
Well, no, I don't want to do that. Just send it to me.
You can leave it to them. You can download our...
Okay, I'll get it back to you. He'll get it back to you. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for your time, everyone.
Okay, so we are just cruising along here. Item 15, Consider and Possibly Approved Minor Change to the City Center Portion of the Official Map for Roadway Segment on the North Side of Williston Road near Dorset Street.
If you're not sticking me yet, this is Paul, I'm Paul Connor, Director of Planning and Zoning. I've got Peter Smire here with me, who's the applicant in this case, from VHB and representing Joe Larkin, who is behind us there. I'll do just a quick introduction, and if you've got any questions, please feel free to direct to either one, but the city official map, as you know, is a tool that is for planning out future infrastructure, and it is designed to be a tool that is a little bit flexible in terms of where exactly it gets located, but where we draw the line with it is to make sure that it's on the property in which we expected it to be located, because it is an encumbrance on a property. So if it's, if we're showing it on Person A's property, then it's not to go on Person B's property because that's a different encumbrance. In this particular case, what we're speaking about is a minor change to the official map going north from the intersection of Dorset Street and Williston Road and then taking a right towards the Windjammer property. Joe Larkin and the adjacent property have come up with a deal where they would share it each, instead of it being entirely on one and then entirely on the other, they would each share. The state law allows a couple of different mechanisms for how this can be addressed. One can be as approval as part of a subdivision plat, but in this case, there is not a subdivision taking place. So the next most straightforward approach that the state law specifically authorizes is for the planning commission to make a recommendation and for you to make an amendment by resolution. So it doesn't need to be an ordinance change because it's a minor change. So that's what it is. We did confirm, the planning commission asked us to confirm that this doesn't mess up anything with the Williston Road-Dorset Street alignment. It does not, and in fact, as part of this project, we're working with Peter and his team and Joe and their team to make some, we think, pretty good positive improvements to that intersection, and if everything goes well, straighten out the jog that exists in there. So that's what we got.
I've moved to approve the minor change to the city center portion of the official map for a roadway segment on the north side of Williston Road near Dorset Street.
Good motion, I'll second it. All right, any further, any questions, any discussion? That's all right. Are you ready for the vote? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Great memo.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, this was so much longer than the, or so much later than the timeframe. Okay. Moving on to item 16, and, okay, so I'll probably take this on as an explanation. So what we have before us is not for action, it's really for discussion. As you are well aware, thank you, I have actually a copy, yeah, I did. I've been, well, I think a year and a half ago, this city council, I think all of us were on the council except for David, passed a resolution, or, no, we didn't pass a resolution. We crafted an MOU that asked the mayor of Burlington directly, pretty much, if he would agree that there would be no more teardowns of buildings near the airport, that we'd have a moratorium on that for 10 years. And they, and that's pretty much all we were asking, I think. And you may eat them, they're your kids. So we reached an impasse. They didn't take it up, they didn't want to agree to that. We went, we have gone back and forth with a number of different memorandums of understanding, and then the city of Winuski became part of the conversation, so it was sort of a three-way MOU. And over the course of the last, I don't know, seven or eight months, I guess, first Seth Leonard, who was the mayor of Winuski, myself and Mayor Weinberger of Burlington, met to talk about this and to try to make some progress. And so this is not a final draft, but this was the last draft that the city of Burlington has come back to both Christine and myself. And so I wanted to share it with you and get some feedback. It's been, it was, and it's taken so long to get to this point, a lot of the language had to change because things that we were, the different whereas has had been accomplished. So it reflects very current, the most recent map, and also the planning that has been, you know, pretty much completed. In the last draft, or the one before this, the city of Burlington came back with a structure that was kind of identifying, well, these are the things that Burlington promises to do, and these are the things that South Burlington needs to do, and these are the things that Winuski can do. So that was the structure, that was not our original structure, but I think it makes it clear and it creates somewhat of a process going... it makes it clear, and it creates somewhat of a process going into the future. I have a couple concerns that I think I would share with you that are, I think, need some reinforcement. If you turn to, I think it's page three, under What the City of Burlington Shall Do.
This is the revised, you're talking about?
Yes.
And the revisions are from Burlington?
Well, they reflect conversations and things. I brought to the table things that Christine has brought, and they've all been incorporated. So this isn't a redlined with, you know, four different lines on it, it's just kind of, we sort of looked at this and said, yeah, that, that pretty much captures what we want, and we've asked them to go back and, you know, do some additional thinking about things. And if you go to, let's see, M, the last thing that the city of Burlington shall do, my feeling is we should underscore maybe more specifically that we, we work with them to find some federal dollars. Because this kind of looks like partnerships. Well, we can either include it in L, to advocate at the state legislature for state funding for local match, and to identify other sources to meet the, meet the local match requirement. And maybe we could say including federal sources, or something like that. But I would like to add that, because I, I think there's the possibility, I mean, certainly when Megan and I met with Pat Leahy's staff, you know, we were pushing for, can you find some federal dollars? In fact, I even asked one of the gentlemen, Chris Sanders, Saunders?
Sanders.
He's the transportation and economic development guy. And I suggested, since one of the reasons that the, I don't know, everyone in, elected besides this council and Winuski, who support this, were, have always cited the economic importance of the guard and this thing, and I thought, well, maybe there's some economic development dollars that could help support this in terms of the noise mitigation and things. So they hadn't thought about that, so I think he's gonna pursue that. But I think federal funding partners, in some form...
I think he wanted us to pursue that, that was my understanding of his reaction.
Well, I think we can do it here.
Yes.
But there, but I, I mean, almost all of the economic development money, you'd know more about this, comes from the feds, doesn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, we, the state has some, but most of it is federal block grant, or, maybe I don't call them block grants anymore, but...
Community development.
Community development grants, so, and unfortunately Burlington has their own little office, they get their own CEDA, CEDO, CEDA?
CEDO.
CEDO. So they probably, since they're the organization that needs to request all these dollars, they probably can't request more dollars for this. So we'll have to see if maybe the state would use some of those dollars to help us support this economic boon of having the military fighter jets in our backyard, and, and help mitigate some of the influences. So that's one thing that I think was left out.
Does the federal, an M there not cover it? Do you want something more explicit?
Well, I guess I'm asking, you know, for some feedback. This is the language, do you think that says that enough? I just wanted to really make sure that that wasn't lost in translation.
I think it should be under L, myself, because it really is the money. Is Chris Sanders with the state?
No, he's with Senator Leahy's office.
I think it is Saunders, actually.
I think it's Saunders, isn't it? Yeah.
For Saunders. So sure, why not add federal, add state, local?
Say it, both places. So, so in L, go back and add, okay, federal. And then I thought we should push for an N that says that if Burlington wants us to commit some of our monies to this ten percent match, I think Burlington needs to commit to identifying possible funding from Burlington to meet the local match. And it's not in here. I think their position is, we need to find the match, Winuski and South Burlington.
Right.
And I think Burlington needs to pitch in also.
Yes, I would agree. And I, I look at how they, you know, point us to our jet fuels local options tax, which is a drop in the bucket, but yet they write to our superintendent, right, that they're not able to use their fees that they collect, the passenger fees that they have to use for airport-related expenses, right? Well, if expanding the airport is not an airport-related expense, that's what the FAA funds are for, is expanding an airport, right?
Well, not just expanding it, but maintaining it as well.
Right, right. So I, I would push back a little bit. We can't use these passenger fees. I, I think, you know, if that's the case, then we should, you know, go towards other fees or other, other possible sources of funding that Burlington might have at its disposal. But this basing decision was, was made, you know, with the mayor and the governor and our senators. And I believe, just, you know, as common sense states, if you make a decision that is going to negatively impact people, you should be prepared to mitigate that negative impact. And I do not sense that in this language that, I agree with you, places the onus on South Burlington and Winuski.
Have you ever, have they ever established, I'm sorry, where the prior match came from?
Passenger fees.
Yeah, what I believe it was from the state, from the fees that they get, from this...
From their fuel tax?
Probably.
Portion came back.
But, or it could be just airport funding that they get from the feds, and then the...
You can't match a federal grant with a federal match.
Right.
Has to come from someplace else.
Right.
Well, then it must have been the, the fees at the airport, and then the city, I'm sorry, there was some funding, must have been state funding, from the, from the state, and then the city's portion of the match came from the airport, from those, those passenger fees.
Right.
Okay.
So they've used them in the past.
Right, to buy houses.
To buy houses and demolish them, yeah. So it seems to me they, I mean, yeah, Tom?
So I'm still very, very hesitant to support South Burlington dollars going for these local matches to contribute and support the operations of an asset that we don't own. And I would just ask, I'd be more comfortable with exploring, or being open to that conversation as one lonely little councillor on this body, if we, in fact, we could start billing the airport for a lot of the time and resources we commit as a municipality. The city of Burlington, I understand, has a payroll offset where they are channeling money from the airport to the city of Burlington to pay for part of the mayor's salary, some lawyer fees, as well as HR, to the tune of three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars a year. That's why they are on the hook for these local matches, because they are a separate financial entity. For us to contribute without a say, or without any way to also recoup our costs, I'm still adamantly opposed to. I want a different governance model, or a different, different model entirely, before I would support South Burlington tax dollars to go towards supporting this Burlington asset. So that's just what I'll say. If we can start sending Burlington, the airport, a bill for Kevin's time, Tom's time, our lawyer's time, when we're spending...
Paul's time.
Paul's time, then I would support exploring, just as one lonely little councillor, sending any of our tax dollars to actually contribute towards this local match for these home acquisitions or other programs. So I'm still against that.
This is leaving five residences completely untethered from any kind of protection, right? And they're in the over seventy-five DNL, which is, it's criminal to my mind.
The only thing they can do is demand.
It's, it's, I'm sorry, that, well, that's, it's, there's something that is really disturbing about all of this situation. And I, I would like to add other things. I would like us to also talk about the evacuation plan that the airport is gonna help us prepare and publicize to, to people. I think that our conversation last Friday was very helpful with regard to, you know, informing the public, so that if, you know, tragedy were to come to pass, the public could take, you know, the steps that it has been informed we can take in order to, you know, reach safety. And this is something that they did for Vermont Yankee for years, that there was an evacuation plan, everybody knew it, everybody was informed of it, it was clearly laid out for people, and they could follow it if need be. Fortunately, they never had to use it. And the same case exists here. And as, you know, people point out, it could be any aircraft. Okay, well, then this is any aircraft. F-35 is a little bit more dangerous, but any aircraft, let's, let's find the evacuation plan. I'd also like us to really look at the Department of Health issues and having those baselines and, and following those health indicators. The EIS lays them out, we have cardiovascular, so we have hypertension, we have heart disease, we have hearing loss, we have school attention deficit, just because of, you know, the noise interruptions, so your, your attention span is reduced. There are other things that I've heard are linked to low-frequency noise waves, and this is actual diagnosed cases here in the Burlington area, where you actually have teeth gnashing and, and wearing down of teeth, you have higher cortisol levels, you have migraine headaches that are linked to these things. There's an increased number of cancers in the neighborhoods around this airport. That already exists. So we should have this baseline in order to follow, and that is something that John Tracy said that we could certainly follow up with the Department of Health.
So what's some, you know, like, brief little language work, one of the things that Burlington is obligated to do is to work with Winuski and South Burlington, to engage the Vermont Department of Health in, what, public service education?
I would think a project, I think it's a research project, right? So if you look at the residences in South Burlington, Burlington and Winuski, and you also look at the schools and the preschools and the childcare centers in the, in that noise zone, right, and you take, you take those health indicators to get our baseline, where are we, as we just have two planes that hardly fly right now, this is a good time for us to get those base indicators. And then as they come two by two, you know, it's through June of 2020, and we have continued flying, let's follow those health indicators. Let's have it be a research study. And let's follow to see, over a generation, what this could be. This is something that's done regularly. We also have, I think, possibility to, to have that coordination and cooperation with regard to the evacuation plan.
So we got evacu, so we're suggesting, we're strengthening the federal dollars focus to find federal dollars.
Yes, but also the Burlington...
Burlington dollars. Commit them to identifying possible funding from Burlington to meet the local match, develop an evacuation plan.
Yep.
And work to engage the Vermont Department of Health in developing baseline indicators, right?
As well as following, following our residence health over...
And health impacts of...
Of a generation.
Okay. And I really would like us to focus on these five homes. I mean, I think this is something. I mean, talk about, you know, having, you know, cars parked on your street versus get out or, you know, be bowled over. I mean, let's get serious here, this is...
Yeah, but on the other hand, you, you want all three people to sign the document, right? I mean, Burden's not gonna sign it if you add all those things to it. They're not, they're not gonna go near it.
Well, maybe not the five homes.
Complete health assessment of South Burlington and Winuski, and a...
The noise zones.
Study.
The noise.
They're, they're not gonna go near that.
Well, that is something we could do...
The biggest can of worms you could ever open.
Without it being in an MOU.
Say again?
That is something we could pursue with the Department of Health, without it being in this MOU.
Yeah, that's true, sure.
I mean, part of this is to get to, yes.
This, this is a pretty reasonable document right now.
I agree, and not have it, you know...
I like what you've got.
So you would think that each town would do it individually, as opposed to having...
Whatever you want to do, just don't put it in this document, because they won't...
Well, you don't think developing an evacuation plan is a...
Oh, the evacuation plan, hmm. I mean, is there an evacuation plan for my neighborhood if it catches on fire? No. I mean, you know, I mean, if a satellite falls out of the sky in my neighborhood and burns down three houses, or, you know, or a small, you know, general aviation plane crashes into my neighborhood, is there an evacuation?
But Tim, have people in your neighborhood been clamoring and calling on the phone and emailing you to find out if there is one? They have been me, they have been me.
Okay.
And they have been Maida.
That's fine, but I mean, you, you, why hasn't there been an evacuation plan for the last fifty years for the airport, for any kind of a plane that would crash there, not just the F-35?
I can't speak to that.
I mean...
All I can speak to is I've received lots of phone calls and lots of emails, and people wanting to know, you know, why we're signing off on these emergency protocols where we don't have any kind of evacuation plan.
What emergency protocol?
Oh, for the region, right? Every year, we have to sign off, who are the contact people, who are, what are the phone numbers?
For the emergency procedures, yeah.
Exactly. And every time that that comes around, I get a phone call, I get emails, where is our evacuation plan? What happens if there is a plane crash?
I mean, if you're gonna, it has, it's not just for that neighborhood, it's gotta be for the whole city. If there's something that happens, like floods, or fires, or whatever it is, I mean, it's gotta be contained in that plan, right?
It's not in that plan.
Not in that plan?
We don't really have evacuation plans for this. We have plans about how to, you know, identify the leadership and who's taking charge and, and that kind of communication, and then they, you know, work out the exact plan.
Command structure.
Yeah. But we don't have an evacuation plan, if anything. I mean, I think some of the communities, maybe as a result of Irene, developed some, I don't know, some evacuation plans if they, if the whole town is...
Development plans.
Right around a river.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but I think people are fearful that the F-35s don't have the thousands of hours of flying time, and there have been crashes, and, and we're the first, you know, a...
Guard base.
Guard base to have them. So the possibility of a crash is a lot greater than the F-16s have been flying, I mean, they crash too, once in a while, but I don't know.
Especially on takeoffs and landings.
Seven thirty-seven MAX has crashed too. Seven oh seven.
They do, but typically not on takeoff.
I mean, the planes do crash. I'm, I'm not trying to belittle that, but I'm just saying that the planes that crash, I mean, I don't know what other places do about having evacuation plans, you know? I mean, I don't know what types of incidents, like a hurricane needs an evacuation plan, because you have seven million people living along a coastline, they've gotta go inland, right?
Respectfully, I don't think it makes any sense for a municipality to, to develop one of these evacuation plans. It makes a lot of sense for the Vermont State Troopers and the Vermont National Guard.
Or the airport.
Or regional resources that would be deployed, because planes can crash anywhere. So I don't think this should be part of South Burlington's.
Well, John Tracy's take was it would be the airport's plan.
Falling into a larger regional coordination of resources.
That's what John Tracy's take was it.
Well, we could ask Burlington, since they own the airport and rule it, to, you know, explore developing a, an evacuation plan.
Clarify for me what, what we're gonna do about the fact that we're paying, we're paying this local options...
Matching?
Match. Match, and that Burlington's
We're not paying it yet. We've never paid it, but now they're talking about having us to start paying. Is that correct? Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and explain
So, I want to
I'm more worried about, concerned about that 'cause it's money than an evacuation plan.
That's just lives.
So, so what's the story on the money?
Well, I mean, I, we met with Leggy. People are trying to find the match.
State, local, federal.
Six million dollars, five to six million dollars.
I personally don't believe it should come out of our general fund.
No, neither do I.
Nick Longo's argument in that last email is that prior to this, the acquisitions then became airport assets, so that's why they came up with the money from passenger fares, but now with the repurchasing programs and the insulation that the assets do not then belong to the airport, and so it requires a local match beyond the airport. I still say it's the airport's problem. The airport needs to come up with the money.
I do too.
Until there's a different governance model where it's a separate regional authority that we're all underwriting it, that's
They, they wanted these jets there. They didn't wanna look at anything else.
Asset is valueless because it's zoned residential. It has no value.
So, are we taking that, are we gonna take that out, then?
There's no, it's, it's, it's an asset, but it has no value because it can't be used for the zoning that it is.
You're talking about the noise land now?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's residential, they can't use it.
Right, exactly.
Why is it an
They can't use it because we have rules, but the FAA rules would allow it if we change our rules.
I, I think his letter to David was bogus. That's my take on it, quite honestly. If they're letting us use our, 'cause our fees are also only for airport-related expenses, right? So, how is insulating a home an airport-related expense for us but not for them, right? The other question that I, that I had was with regard to, uh, what was it again? Where the, the taxes, there might be a change in the taxes as these changes are made. What was that? I'm, I'm sorry, it's, when it gets past ten thirty, what's that?
While you're looking, while you're looking, there's a typo in section four where it says essing, S S I N G. The word method of essing, noise concerns, I think it means easing.
On number
In section four of the, of the new draft.
Yep.
Halfway down to the far right, it says methods of essing.
Oh, oh, assessing should be, right?
It's easing?
Oh, of easing, yeah. Thank you.
I don't see it coming out blatantly saying South Burlington's gonna commit to the local match, but I do see in the new wording, which is why I asked you, Helen, about who, where these markups come from, in item K, it really seems like Burlington, if they crafted that as a backend way to start opening the door for us to commit local South Burlington dollars for some of these matches.
Oh, yes. And I, I don't think we should include that in here.
So, is that from them?
Or at least, that's from them.
Okay, okay, they wrote K. So, to your point, Dave, following up on the local match dollars, they don't explicitly state it, but I think they're using roundabout language, again, pushing what Nick Longo stated in his last note to us, that South Burlington and the communities where these homes reside in need to be the local match providers.
Brittany, remind me, if a house get insulated, does it have to take an navigation easement also, or was that another
No, no. Only if, at least what they're submitting, as I understand it, is only if the airport buys it from them, does the mitigation, and then puts it on the market again.
So, yeah.
So, in that case, are we required a local match on that to some degree, or is it just the insulation?
Well, the whole, the whole
Program?
Program. Whether it includes ongoing noise mitigation, I mean, noise monitoring as well as the insulation is got this ten percent match. I mean, I sort of understand why the federal government requests a match. I mean, they do transportation, it's only like one, three percent or something. It's teeny. This is ten percent, but, I mean, I sort of get it, but I don't, in this instance, I don't think it should come from us.
So, this letter H is where I saw it. Work with the airport to address issues associated with various noise mitigation options such as the tax consequences of property improvements. What is that? And of property taken out of residential use while repairs are made. What is that? What is that H? What are they saying here?
Do they want us to waive South Burlington taxes while they're owning a home for one to however many years?
Yeah, what the heck is that?
Well, if you, if you insulate a property, you
Can you live there while it's being done?
Well
So, that's if they buy the house and then they fix it up, but who knows how long they'll take to fix it up, so are they looking to not pay taxes while they're sitting on that
No, I, I will ask. I'm not clear on that. That's why it's good to have lots of people read this stuff.
I mean, just because a home isn't, is no, is no residence there doesn't change its property tax status.
That's right.
I wouldn't think so.
If you leave for, yeah, Florida for the winter, you're still paying all your property taxes, as well as the cost of the water.
As Todd told us tonight, it's what it is.
April first, that's right.
Whatever. I don't understand that either.
Okay, I, I will get some more information on that. And then I, I also, I, I wanna push back, I, I believe we should push back on this, we're committing those tax, the, the
Local option tax?
Letter I.
No, it's letter I, yeah.
Yeah.
Aviation jet fuels tax?
Yeah, the jet fuel, like
They can't use their passenger fees, right? And you had language in the previous version of this, and it's not in this blue-lined one, where you said that for each noise exposure map, there would be a new plan, a new N C P. And I did not find that here. And I liked that.
You liked that.
That they could not just piggyback on a previous N C P to get whatever they wanted more out of it, to squeeze more juice out of the lemon.
Okay.
Okay.
It's good work, keep
It's a practical matter, Megan, if, if the noise changed, if noise map came along and changed, you would, presumably, you'd still want the same programs, right? The insulation and the, as opposed to the demolition. You'd still want what's in the N C P now. And we like the N C P now, right? And the mitigation efforts.
Residents do. I won't say I like it, but residents do. I, I would prefer we not have this noisy aircraft at our airport.
But, but would you change the, would you change the methods of addressing the noise if the noise changed? Would we like the methods to apply regardless of if the noise changes? In other words, would, would you really need another N C P if you liked the one we had?
I would want to have an environmental impact study if there was a noise change. I would want us to be able to say we agree or we don't agree, to be quite honest. When those jets were swapped out in two thousand eight, the decision was made, and it was done in two thousand and nine, and they increased the number of sorties without any input, no public input, and we lost all those homes that we've lost since? That was wrong. That was, that was stealing. That was not, I'm sorry. And if we can put that in there, I'm all for that as well. And if noise monitoring is the way to go for us to do that in a nice way, to have them sign, then let's do that.
I think we have, we don't have noise monitoring in this, but that's in the N C P. So, I'm not sure it needs to be in here, if it's part of the plan. This, this M O U is kind of a process, in some ways, a process of moving forward and dealing with things. If that's been determined.
Okay.
I, I, at least, that's how I think we're looking at this, not a
I appreciate that. I don't, yeah, I don't know the limitations of this. I'm, I'm very wary of some of the language, and I'm very wary of how they're carving out where the money can come from, depending on which community it, it is.
Well, I, you know, probably the I under the City of South Burlington, commit to funding local match portions using the allocated local options tax. I mean, that already has some structure around it. We can only use it for airport-related. I don't necessarily think Burlington should be telling us how to, where to spend that.
Thank you. Let's take it off, then.
If our option is, I mean, I, I don't know what other uses we would use it for, but
We shouldn't be told what we're gonna use it for.
Right.
How much is that?
Seven
Not that it matters.
Seventy to eighty thousand a year.
Thousand dollars a year.
Just started accumulating this year.
Two, we've gotten two payments so far.
Yeah, well, it used to be part of our local options.
Yeah.
Now it's been
I, I just take that out.
It's not new money. We've gotten it for quite a few years.
It's got forty K in it, something like that.
I, I just take that one out.
Okay, I will suggest that we take that out, and, I mean, we have some strictures around it, but we'll decide exactly which part. I mean, maybe we wanna use it to help some buy something for a house that the FAA won't fund.
Well, that's a thought.
You know, I mean, they're, they're saying
Over the five, the five homes that face either demolition or insulation, and insulate those homes.
Well, there.
That's an option.
And make it a regional airport so we can have a fair
I'm with you, Dave.
Well, I, you know, I know Jimmy had, has some amendments that he wanted us to consider, and I, I told him, if he had some amendments, you know, write it out. I, I will tell you, Jim, I, I read through them, and I think this is not the right document for these. This, this is not meant to be an indictment of the F thirty-five, whereas I might agree with a lot of your statements, this is not the vehicle. It, it's dead in the water. We had stronger language, but not this strong, in previous drafts, and they, they didn't go anywhere. This is, you know, I appreciate your work and your concern, and, well, this just becomes a lot of whereas is that people argue about the veracity. I, I, and I'm not suggesting that you are not telling the truth, but people see things differently, and that's, you know. Tom?
I just wanna say, I, I do appreciate your emails, Mr. Lees, about the sound monitoring. I, I support that. I think we need to find money for it. I wanna get true, accurate, real-time data measures of the sound coming from the airport. So, thank you for that documentation and those emails, but I would agree with your statement that I, I don't think this is the right vehicle for the arguments that are laid out in this draft.
I do like M and N, and ampu
The M and N in
Like M and M, you said?
M, yeah, be careful what I say. Yeah. M, request that no F thirty-five takeoffs at Burlington International Airport be authorized until all sound mitigation installation is complete. I wouldn't put it quite that way, but I would say, request that no military takeoffs or F thirty-five takeoffs that, you know, reach a certain level be authorized until all sound mitigation installation is complete. To be quite honest, since the day in September, or whenever, the two arrived, life has not changed much. These two do not fly very much at all. But if we've got eighteen flying around and there's still no noise mitigation, that's a problem. That's a problem. And I would like us to address that, that, in terms of how quickly this money comes forward. Now, when we were looking at acquiring homes, the twenty-year plan could be all of a sudden reduced to a ten-year plan, just like that, all right? So, somehow, those local funds, the matching funds were found. Somehow, the FAA agreed to that accelerated timeline, and I think we could certainly put that, that we're looking into an accelerated timeline, that this should not take twenty years. Or if that's the case, then we should not have eighteen F thirty-fives flying.
So, isn't that more a part to go, or a point to make in the N C P?
I mean, I just, I mean, these are, I thought they were general statements for how we would be approaching discussions and potential solutions, and I think that a general statement about an approach for a policy at the airport is that noise levels should not exceed X until noise has been mitigated, right? And that the communities agree to seek an accelerated timeline through the N C P process.
Well, I guess if you word it that way, it might be more acceptable. I mean, to, for, for Burlington to, but, I mean, again, I think it's, well, I guess Burlington directs Gene Richards as to what he applies for, but
I mean, let's just compare to Madison, Wisconsin, right? Now, they're on the shortlist for this plane, and the mayor has come out and said, we will not, I will not support this basing unless the Air Force prevents and/or fully mitigates the negative impacts on the residents of this community. That's a statement I would love to hear the mayor of Burlington say.
Yeah.
And I would like to see some, something to that effect in the M O U.
I, I
I don't think there's any problem with encouraging a faster pace, but I think that's fine. Encourage a faster pace. I don't think I wanna put threats in there before we, before, this can happen or before that can, just encourage the faster pace, 'cause the faster, the better.
And then the N is commit to requiring landlords in South Burlington's noise danger zone to sound insulate homes to protect tenants. I think there is something there, that tenants are particularly vulnerable. Homeowners, we have a choice, right? We can leave, and we're aware because we receive all the notices as homeowners. Tenants do not necessarily receive those notices and do not have the choice except for, you know, to move out, but they don't receive that firsthand information, they are not given that authority to, to protect their families.
So, why do you want us putting in there? Why do you want us to
I, I am concerned about rental properties and the landlords not being, you know, proactive enough to protect their tenants.
Well, we can't even make a homeowner, though, apply for this stuff.
But a homeowner is a different, that's, that's up to the homeowner, right? That's, that's, that's your property, you do what you want on your property. But, I mean, look at, you know, as like a
Well, so, I own it and I rent it, it's my property. Can I do what I want with it?
Well, just like
And I don't wanna spend money and
Just like for Airbnbs, right? We've been looking at that language. We've had Chief Terry Francis here telling us, you know, what you do in your private home, we can't as a fire department come in and say, you need to do this, this, and this, and this. But if you have an Airbnb, we have to come into your house and we have to tell you, you have to do this, 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 and this. There's a different set of rules when you are, right, subjecting people that are not part of your family, part of your, you know
I would just say, what you're describing, I think, would fall, roll better into a larger conversation. We've had, we've circled many times previously about a rental registry, so to give a better idea of what the rental units are in South Burlington and to better regulate how they're being conditioned, recorded, tracked, and also
That's gonna take how long? Longer than twenty years. We're talking about, we're talking about, hey, let's listen. I, I'm in a position where I can move, okay? I might take a loss, but I could move, right? There are many people who are not in that position, right? If they move, they're out of South Burlington, okay? There are new Americans, there are refugees, there are people who are living on very low incomes, there are people who are in multi-generational homes. We have to protect the people who can, do not have the wherewithal, do not have the resources, and do not have the protection of their federal government or their state government or the mayor of Burlington in order to make sure that they live healthy lives.
So, so is this something we should encourage all three communities to do? I mean, it sounds like we're I mean, it sounds like what you're saying is what we really need to make sure is that landlords and tenants understand what some of the options are.
That's correct.
The tenants don't have, they're not owners, so I don't think they have the same rights here.
That's the issue.
Legal rights, legal rights.
They have the right to live in a safe environment.
But they can know what they would want and go to their landlord and say...
Yeah, I mean, they, it's fine to have the educational component there, but the landlords, I mean, if they, if they want to stay competitive, they could advertise that their property has been insulated by the program brought by the FAA, FAA, whereas that one hasn't been. So, from a free market point of view, right, if they choose to have it insulated, they have an advantage in renting it, you know? So...
I think...
But you can't get, you can't get a renter to force a landlord to insulate a property...
You know, you can't. But what can we do as responsible people who, one of them asking for the plane, to make sure that rental properties are perhaps first in line?
I would just say again, the rental registry...
Good luck with that, too. I mean, I...
Yeah, I, I mean, I appreciate where you're coming from. Again, I just don't see how this MOU is necessarily the right vehicle to advance that.
No, I think...
I think that's something that maybe you, you know, we include with our comments on the NCP, that, you know, we anticipate, that in the rollout of these programs, that landlords and, you know, presumably their tenants are well-informed and encouraged to...
Well, Burlington does have a rental registry, so that is something we could put on their list that we would encourage. I don't know.
You don't have the landlord requirements in South Burlington that they have in Burlington?
No, not at all.
We've explored it previously.
If accelerating...
We've explored it previously, it's something we could do.
If accelerating the timeline is the way to get to that, then that's where we need to put our focus on it.
Well, then, that's what I said. Let's, let's indicate that we want the timeline accelerated without quantifications to it. And we're closer. I think we're running the evening out here, quite honestly.
Yep.
And, um, I gotta go.
Well, I gotta...
Okay.
Thank you, Tom. I will buy into that.
Jimmy, you wanted to say something brief?
Yes.
Briefly.
Thank you. Well, I mean, I think this MOU may have some, may have some value. And one of its values is it's an opportunity for South Burlington to express two Burlington things that this is a vehicle for us to communicate what we want. And I think we heard tonight that Burlington is using it as a vehicle to say what it wants. It wants money from South Burlington and it wants other things. And I don't think we should shut up, like some of the people on this council are advocating, about what we want. We should be saying it clearly, openly, and forcefully. This plane is harming people. And it's harming people in ways that other airports don't have to worry about. Like Boston, they have noise monitoring equipment, but they only have commercial jets. And those jets get quieter every year. We learned from the Burlington, from the Boston website, that they had over a hundred thousand people in the noise zone in the nineteen eighties. Now, only three thousand.
We have over six thousand.
Because the planes are getting quieter.
Not military.
But this plane isn't gonna ever get quieter. We are seeing increases in noise, and it's a different kind of noise. It's a noise that affects your internal organs because it's extremely low frequency. It's not something you can mitigate against with sound insulation. This whole plan is flawed. To mitigate houses, when people are gonna be harmed anyway, the FAA says, "Don't insulate the houses." They say, "Tear them down if you're gonna have an F-35." There is a way to protect our housing, stop it. Stop the F-35. Cancel it. And that's what we should be talking about in our communication with these other cities. Burlington voted to stop the F-35, to cancel it. How can they refuse to hear that, when their own citizens told them that? This is the plan to protect our housing. It's to cancel the F-35. It's to make obstacles in the way of continuing it. It's to force Burlington to pay in every possible way. It's to put pressure on the mayor in all the different ways, and eventually we'll win. But if we cave to them, we are collaborating in harming the citizens of South Burlington. And we should never be in that position.
Yeah, I do want to say that Burlington has never given a yay about South Burlington. Not once, not once. This has been a rape. I'm being very serious. I study post-colonial literature, and if you want to study colonial literature, and you want to study the authors out of Haiti, you want to study the authors out of Algeria, you want to study the authors out of all these countries where Western powers have gone in and stolen resources, and what they've done to those people, these authors adopt the symbol of rape, and it is. And that is exactly what has happened to our communities. And I, I do hear that in Jimmy. We have every right to make this as unpleasant as possible, because we are being taken.
Well, I have some, I mean, I don't totally disagree, but I think this, the purpose of the MOU is, I mean, I, I think we're stuck with the planes. And so, I'm hoping that maybe we can do something to help the people who still live in that community, and that is in terms of some sound mitigation. Do I think that solves the problem? No, because as soon as you go outside, it's noisy.
But if the NCP is for that, Helen, what is this really about? I mean, what is this really about?
Well, I think it's coming to an agreement about, or an understanding about how we move forward.
All I see is that Winuski is gonna get a seat at the table, maybe, hopefully, but I don't see any win for South Burlington in there. And I just don't. I see them asking, I mean, they ask for our money, but they're not offering any of their money.
Well, I think we're countering, you need to come up with some money, too.
Well, now, we're countering, right? But they took that off before, so we'll see. I mean, we can play, we can play this back and forth, but...
We need to be tougher.
Well, maybe we do one more...
I agree with that.
We need to be tougher with Burlington. I'm not, I'm not overly clear on the, on the whole MOU, but if we need an MOU, then we need to be tougher on Burlington, it's their airport, and, and they've got to take much more responsibility.
And I want an evacuation plan.
That doesn't, if you want one, there can be one.
You're not receiving the phone calls, I guess. I'm receiving them.
Well, that's what I said. If you want one, there can be one. I don't see that as a, as a killer to, to this MOU. And that, and, but I see the financial piece of it. Burlington's got to step up to the plate and not want to take, tell us that we're paying.
And they're doing the same thing to Red Rocks. Let's just be really clear. They're doing the same thing to Queen City Park. That is the taking. And it's all out of greed, it is all out of short-sighted vision. And I am, we have to be much more forceful about defending our residents.
Well, I will bring those thoughts back, and it may be that there isn't an MOU. I mean, when we started the MOU conversation, and it was very specific, you have to agree, you're not gonna tear down and buy any more homes.
But it's out of, it's out of it, right? They took it out. So, now they've just come back and say, "We'll take your, your local options tax on the aviation fuel fee."
Well, we have also been pushing for noise mitigation and an NCP that includes that. So, it's not, you know, we've been part of it, too.
Eleven ten.
So, can this man, Mr. Marvin, can he plant two trees for his parents, Hugh and Marion?
Are we skipping agenda items?
This is under other business?
We haven't given it seventeen yet. We got seventeen yet.
You would like to make a comment? Can it be brief, because it's late?
Appreciate.
And I know that Joanna has a comment as well, and I think Joanna would be also brief. I, I think that, I just really want to highlight that, I think that there's a level of neglect going on presently in the community that I just can't comprehend, that it appears to me that folks are willing to allow these planes to fly over schools, neighbors, children, even, I'm really sorry that the suggestion I heard you make the last time about actually allowing children to visit on a field trip, I found that horrifying and deeply disturbing.
Sorry, you found it disturbing? I'd still stand by it. I'd love to take my kids to see the planes.
I, I, I feel that there's a level of neglect of children and their moral development going on in our community in terms of the lessons that we would want children to learn about what makes human society workable. And when I'm listening to everyone talking, I, what I feel the undertone is, is yes, we care, but we can't afford to care too much. And I'm just telling you that the other day, I was in Winuski, visiting a friend who's moving to the Keans Crossing building, and today I asked if she would like headphones of noise protection, so I went out and I bought her industrial strength noise protection to live in her home. So, that's for her and her daughter. I, I, I know that everyone said we don't need a new environmental impact statement, nothing has changed. Perhaps the way the sound hits the contours of the earth has not changed, or what you might experience if you were in a given location. However, what has changed is our human landscape in the years since 2013, when the last environmental impact statement was made. That's six years during which we've seen a lot of home construction. I have a friend who lives in the apartments right near the Winuski River, where she has a new baby. So, that's something that's changed. There are a lot of new babies in our community. There are a lot of people who are gonna be impacted by this. I don't understand, I thought I just heard you say that you agree that there ought to be noise, of, of noise monitoring. You agree with that? So, is that going to be in this memorandum of understanding?
I was pushing in the NCP. You were trying to keep the NCP separate from the...
It's in the NCP, the proposal.
This MOU is something different. It's an animal...
But I would like to have something in this MOU, that if there is a significant noise, that we have a new environmental impact statement. I would really like us to be able to step in like we did not have the opportunity to do in 2008, 2009.
We don't understand why the airport director has not already submitted a grant application to the FAA to purchase and install noise monitoring and a tracking system, and it seems that that might be a question that you could ask Gene Richards. Why has that not yet been done? Because there are a number of noise impacts and a number of issues that we've known for many years are going to be impacting our community, and I don't see where the accountability is. And I appreciate the, the strong voices on this council. I really do. And I just hope that you will consider that it's absolutely absurd that takeoffs are being allowed at this time. We've asked for sound insulation prior to this happening. I just wanted you all to know that when you invited the wing commander...
I can't imagine eighteen takeoffs with no sound insulation.
When you invited the wing commander here, I asked him afterwards to speak with me, and he was rushing out the door, and I said, "We're being forced to live in a place where we're being impacted with noise at this level." And one person in his entourage said, whispered quietly to me, like a bully, "You can always move away." Is that what the National Guard stands for? And is that what you allow? Because this is just entirely unacceptable to me. So, I support the evacuation plan idea. It sounds like the National Guard's evacuation plan idea is just drive residents out who don't like it. I don't, I don't accept that. So, I appreciate the accelerated timeline. The accelerated timeline is already very, very much delayed. An accelerated timeline would have happened five years ago. So, I think that the only real alternative is cancellation, and I think that I'm, I'm really encouraging everyone to take courage, to find the strongest line, and to work collectively together to stop the harm to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's very late, but I just wanted to, to say that the MOU, in my view, should have something about noise measurement. Burlington has shown no inclination to do serious noise measurement, and I don't believe they're gonna do it without pressure. And, and pressure from the surrounding communities, or even the example of doing it on your own may shame Burlington into doing it. There must be a reason why they haven't done it. It seems that they don't want to know. But that's the key to accountability, it's the key to having the information to track illnesses and exposures, it's a key to, to have real data to see if this crazy average that's being, that's being promulgated in the model has any reality. Without actual measurements, over time, we'll never know. And had there been measurements over the last fifteen years, we would have data to see that the F-16s were promised not to use afterburners and promised a certain number of sorties, and then they, they used afterburners and increased, et cetera. At this level, it's only hearsay. So, please, I think this is an opportunity for the committees to get together in the MOU to pressure Burlington to, to do the right thing. Thank you.
Joanna, please. Please identify yourself for the record.
Sorry?
Identify yourself for the record.
Oh, sorry. I'm Joanna Rankin, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, I will, I can put the sound, noise thing in, too. I mean, that makes sense. That's fine.
So, the health, is that something that you can follow up on?
Yeah, I got the health thing, yes.
The health's gonna go in there, too?
Yep. I'll put them all in and see what happens. All right? So, the last item is other business, right?
Seventeen, reports.
It's the committee reports.
Oh, reports. I've already reported my stuff.
I missed the last pension advisory board meeting, I trust that went well. Thank you.
Market's up, so...
Yeah. Broken record.
Pension isn't doing well in this market. You got it in the wrong vehicles, I think. Tom, you, you, no, okay.
Other business?
The other business is the trees and memorials. I mean, do we want to make it a structure, so there's a little, a little bit of a process, or do you just...
Sure, we should create a process that enables people to do this upon request, and that we can make the decisions whether they're valid. Hugh Marvin was a, was a great guy, I worked closely with him many years ago. It'd be wonderful to honor him. And I think we say we'll do it, we just have to figure out the structure so that we can enable this to happen for, for other people, you know, when appropriate. And we'll come up with that in short order.
I'd love to name Fire Station Two after Chuck Hafter at some point, but that's, wait until he's been gone for some time. Want to know what Kevin Dorn and Tom Hubbard want?
We named the Tunnel Down in Virgin's after Roger Gayheart before he was...
We got some Mansky Park on, so...
We don't have to wait for people to disappear, I'm moving ahead.
I have some other business.
Okay.
You have some other business?
I'm sorry, it's so late.
You should be.
I'm sorry. We're missing the twenty-five mile an hour sign on Spear Street at Quarry Hill. They paved, they took it down, so the police can't...
Oh, right, they did, they never put it back up.
The police cannot give a ticket on that street. On northbound Spear Street, Quarry Hill, that's missing a twenty-five mile an hour sign that used to be there.
Just northbound of Quarry Hill Road.
Yeah. It's like immediately, right?
That's a valid point.
For the...
I immediately sped back up to thirty-five, because I figured they decided we didn't need that anymore.
The next agenda, can we have an energy efficiency report from Lubrizie?
Yeah, you can have, you, let me check the, I think the... Um, yeah, you can have, you, let me check the, I think the, the agenda's getting pretty full. There is probably going to be an executive session.
Okay. We need, we need a report from the, from Lou and what he's doing.
And are we going to-
And you've got the two, uh, two speakers coming in. We're still trying to get, uh-
Five, the two speakers?
Oh, the, the two people from UVM, um, the guy who does-
No, from UVM and from the state.
Oh, good, okay. And how about the, um, task force for recreation and parks? And we're going to have also a report on our use of 1/2 cent of the open space fund?
Yes.
Are these both in November?
I'm not done yet.
Oh, yeah.
Can you guys just send me all?
We have, I know Justin is going nuts, right?
Yes.
But in that windstorm, we had a lot of trees, dead trees, branches blow down on the Spear Street and other streets as well. We have dead trees on Dorset and Spear that need to come down. You can see they've got no bark. They're just accidents waiting to happen to blow down on cars or pedestrians.
Are they ours? Are they our trees?
They're, they're in our, yeah, they're in our road, uh, yeah, right away, yeah. It, it doesn't have to be right away, but I'm, huh, right away. But, but it should be an ongoing thing for Public Works to take down trees that are next to the road.
We normally contract that out.
You do? Okay. The last thing is, and this is, this is kind of tangential, that the report in seven days about the state wanting to sell confiscated guns that was quashed by Governor Scott on Thursday, the article came out on Wednesday, Scott read it and, and put a hold on selling confiscated guns on Thursday. I know that, that we've had the chief in here before, and Chief Whipple said that when they get ready to, when a, when they're, when the handguns are, have reached their end of life, they like to trade them in for a refund. I'd like, I'd like us to discuss at a future meeting the possibility of just destroying the guns and not trading them in for refund, because they get resold on the market at that point. So, but just for future discussion.
We, we trade in our blocks, right?
I know it, but I'd like to have the discussion and know whether we could just take the opportunity just to destroy them and get them off, get them out of the market.
Out of circulation.
Out of circulation.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other business?
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Is that all? Okay. A motion to adjourn.
I'm moved. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. What's 100 dollars off?
I need to, um, chat with you.